I can't believe it!
Great, fifty-five dollar shirt and I can't, but you won't believe this.
I don't want to hear about your promise, I had trouble getting in as well.
It's a lot of expensive shirts, they'll never be replaced.
Oh boy.
You know what, I gotta get it, just, yeah, you two, I'll see you later.
You're doing really well even though it's still hot out here today. Watch those branches. Okay, hold on a minute. Okay, go ahead and watch that one.
Whoa, thank you.
Oh, that's disgusting.
I'm going home.
Richard, get back in here, the toilet's about up!
I don't believe this. Oh my goodness!
Oh my gosh, I must hit her!
Without Public Works, L.A. becomes living hell.
Daddy! Daddy!
It's a critical time for Los Angeles because due to a longstanding lack of resources, our once healthy infrastructure is on the decline. Los Angeles is the second largest city in America. We have some of the most massive infrastructure systems in the world. And the Department of Public Works is responsible for a huge percentage of them.
We seek over 600,000 curmiles a year.
We remove illegally dumped trash and debris from over 5,000 locations every year.
We maintain over 290 acres of median islands and the city's urban forest, almost 700,000 trees. We also prune 90,000 trees a year.
Of course, we also fix and maintain city streets.
You know, I call it 3-1-1, and street services stick care of it.
The city collects trash, recyclables, and yard trimmings from 720,000 households a week.
We don't just collect refuse, recyclables, and yard waste, we're also responsible for maintaining and repairing 6,500 miles of sewer and storm drains and collecting and treating wastewater.
I just made the call and they picked it up!
We get calls about recycling tires, dead animals in the street, industrial waste handling, picking up of large bulky items, you name it.
The Department of Public Works has a vision for the future and extraordinarily committed city personnel who are anxious to pursue this vision.
We prepare designs, specifications, and estimates for all major Public Works improvement projects.
We're also responsible for building streets, sewers, and storm drains.
As well as construction of public buildings and hundreds of public facilities.
How does the Department of Public Works do it all?
We administer contracts and permits for the city's construction and improvement projects.
The Bureau of Contract Administration also inspects all work on a daily basis constructed on public property insured, and it meets the highest quality standards and is completed on schedule.
All of the bureaus of the Department of Public Works collaborate to produce excellent results.
The only problem is that in Los Angeles lately, we've only had enough funding for the most immediate and urgent needs.
Many of L.A.'s infrastructures are very old. We have a lot to do in order to maintain and improve them over the next ten years.
Unfortunately, infrastructure spending in California has been on the decline.
In 1960, 20% of statewide spending was on developing and maintaining public infrastructure. By the year 2000, it was down to 3%.
Public Works benefits everyone, including those services that we take for granted.
But the budget for the next ten years is not enough to cover the city's needs. If Los Angeles doesn't increase spending for the necessary maintenance and improvements, its infrastructure will continue to deteriorate.
And we'll have to do without improvements for the future, such as the Department of Public Works, 95 new projects to reduce traffic ingestion.
How can they get the money they need to maintain and improve our infrastructure?
When multiple proposals are passed in the city, they allocate funding for various Public Works projects.
I guess my vote on bonds really can make a difference.
I asked for another light on the street, and there it is.
The city's streetlight system has over 240,000 lights, covering 5,000 of L.A.'s 7,000 miles of streets.
Public Works designs and executes public projects such as sidewalks, bridges, wastewater treatment facilities, and libraries.
We're hampered only by the limitations in our budget.
We take care of 73,000 miles of public streets and alleys.
We maintain over 1,200 miles of storm drains.
We have a staff of over 5,500 dedicated employees.
As Los Angeles keeps pace with the needs of its people, the Board of Public Works continues its leadership tradition.
After more than ninety years of service, we're still here to serve the city of L.A.
Hey, hey buddy! You with the stupid hat! Come here, closer! No parking! Do you know what happens when you park illegally on these narrow hillside streets? You block the street so emergency vehicles can't pass. Each year, homes are destroyed and lives are lost because of drivers like you who park illegally! And you know what else? You can get a citation! And you can be towed!
Help us get to the emergency. The life we save just might be yours.
How'd you know?
The ball called!
Hey, look out for the pothole!
L.A. City View Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
There was a wall made of stones. It curved like your hair through rising fields of green grasses. Beyond it, I saw the dark ocean as the light deepened and slowly took hold of everything as it left us.
Yeah, because the rest of them are down here except for Weston.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Wednesday, February 13th, 2008. We are here in the John Farrow Council Chambers, room 340 of City Hall. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., except for the first Friday of the month in which we are in Van Nuys City Hall. I'm Council President Eric Garcetti, joined by my colleagues, Council members Tony Cardenas, Wendy Gruel, Tom LeBonge, Bernard Parks, Jan Perry, Ed Reyes, Greg Smith, Jack Weiss, and Dennis Zein. We have a quorum present, but wanted to run through a few things. Before that, we want to welcome our viewers on Channel 35, which broadcasts us live and rebroadcasts us each meeting. We're also available online through lacity.org, where you can catch webcasts of our meetings, and through your telephone at 213-621-CITY, and you can listen to the proceedings of the City Council meetings. Our agendas are available online 72 hours in advance or at the City Clerk's office, also here in person. And if you would like to give public comment on any of the items before us, please fill out a speaker card and give it to one of the Sergeants at Arms, we'd be happy to hear that, or for items of a general nature under our jurisdiction, you can fill out a speaker card for general public comment as well. So with that, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alec, and Cardenas, Gruel, Han, Weiser, LeBonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Weiss, Weston, Zein, Garcetti, ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Weiss moves with Mr. Reyes seconding, without objection, those minutes will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
And Mr. Parks moves that, Mr. Cardenas seconds, without objection, those two will be approved. Next order of business?
Mr. President, would you like to take up public comment at this time?
Let's run through the agenda, and then we'll return for public comment.
First item on the agenda is an item notice for public hearing. The recommendation for council action is to open the hearing and continue the hearing in ordinance to March 5th.
Okay, is there any objection to that, colleagues? If not, let's go ahead and continue that till the 3rd, please open the roll. Nope, okay. We will continue that without objection, excuse me, next items.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items 2 through 27. And there's a request, Mr. President, on item number three, the applicant requests a continuance to April 15th.
Okay, is there any objection, colleagues, to continuing item three till the 15th of April? Seeing none, that will be the order of the day. We'll hold 2 and 4 until we have 12 members, we do expect 12 members in. And again, Council members Han, Rosenthal, and Weston, if you'll please join us. Other specials, colleagues, 5 through 27. 5 through 27. Any specials? Going once, going twice? Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those items are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 28 through 42, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, we have some cards from the public for those, so we'll call 28 special, 29 special, 30 special, 34 special, and 39 special as well. Colleagues, any other specials? 28 through 42?
And, Mr. President, there's a request to continue item number 31 to February 27th.
Any objection, colleagues, to continuing that till the 30, sorry, item 31 till the 27th? If not, so ordered.
And also on item number 37, there are two communications on the file, they concur, council can adopt both if wishes.
I'll move both of those. No objection, Mr. LeBonge.
Did you move those that fast at 25? Was anybody here for 25? Anybody from the department here for 25?
Going once, going twice, and paused for a long time, but...
So this was just approved, so it becomes a street instead of an alley?
A street, all right, congratulations. We've just upgraded an alley to a street, it's a big day for promotions. Any other specials, colleagues? 32 to 42, if not, can we take the balance, not called special? Sorry, with the exception of 32, if we can hold that for 12 members as well. So 33, 35, 36, sorry, 38, 7, 38, 40 through 42, please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items on the continuation agenda, items 44 and 45 are items for which public hearings have been held.
I'll call 45 special. 44, anybody wanting to call 44 special?
Those reports have not been submitted as yet.
Okay, why do we hold...
I believe they're in the process of being distributed to the council members, however.
Okay, let's hold that on the table in the meantime. And if we can temporarily recess the meeting and call the roll for, is it 10:15 yet? Are we... Mr. City Attorney, are two minutes until we call a roll for the special meeting? Okay, I'd like to make a quorum call once again, excuse me, attendance call for Council Member Han, Council Member Rosenthal, Council Member Weston, we are awaiting your attendance to be able to vote on the ordinances, if you'll please come down as soon as possible so we can have 12 members.
Mr. President...
Yes, Mr. LeBonge?
I left the Commerce and Tourism Committee so they could take a very important executive matter of a report on airport issues, and they will be coming down as shortly as possible there in the upstairs committee room. And also, number 44, we got to discuss 44?
We will be discussing 44, it looks like, we're holding that on the desk, waiting for the report right now.
Thank you.
And that report has been submitted.
It has been submitted. Would you like to call it special, Mr. LeBonge?
Sure.
Okay. We will call that special for Mr. LeBonge.
Is 45 continued from yesterday?
Yeah, we'll call that special. And if we can ask the Sergeant at Arms to help us, the Chair of the Committee, I don't believe they have quorum up there, but if the Chair of the Committee, she can stay up there, but if we can get the member down and Mr. Weston as well. All right, if we can continue the, I know we haven't gone to the special meeting yet, is that two minutes, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. President.
All right, if we can call the roll for the special meeting.
Alec, and Cardenas, Gruel, Han, Weiser, LeBonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Weiss, Weston, Zein, Garcetti, ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business?
There is one item on the agenda, and it is, a committee report has been submitted, it's an HCED report.
Okay. If we can go ahead and open the roll on 43, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And if we can send that forthwith without objection, that'd be great. And we'll go back to the regular meeting and take up public comment at this time. We will start with Mr. Arnold Sacks, after him will be Mark Ambrose, and after that will be Lucille Caruso, excuse me. Arnold Sacks is our first speaker.
Good morning, thank you, Arnold Sacks, I feel cheated by not having a full council members here, but nevertheless. Recently, the mayor's call to reduce access to city vehicles from city staff has met with resistance. I've yet to hear for a counterproposal that would show some kind of savings for many of the council members sitting on City Council. I've yet to hear any of the City Council members come up with any ideas that would go a long ways towards saving any of the money that's necessitated by the city's deficit. Lots of complaints about actions, but no action being taken. The City Council moving as it always does. Thank you for your time and your answers.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks, there have been, I think, I might count five motions on savings from different council members, and we've been holding extensive hearings on the budget, which included the mid-year report, which we commend to your attention, which is full of our strategies to ensure that we will be able to deal with the budget situation here, and there's some great work that's in there, and we welcome any other suggestions. Mark Ambrose is our next speaker.
I'm Mark Ambrose, and I'd really like to speak on item 45, so can we switch me to that item?
On item 45, we had a public hearing on that yesterday.
I understand.
It can be reopened by a council member, but there's no automatic triggering of that, but we'll mark your card for 45.
Okay, and that, so I may not be able to speak?
That, it depends on council members, whether we reopen that or not.
Okay, well, then, in that case, I will take this.
And we can't actually have you speak in public comment on something that's on the agenda, it's specifically...
All right, so it's not on the agenda. All right, I'll speak on something else, is that okay?
Yes, absolutely.
Just procedurally, there should be better notice of what kind of actions the City Council's going to take. We were watching last week's session on a repeat on the internet, and the item was rescheduled for this week. The particular item didn't get passed with a unanimous vote, so it had to be voted on again. And so you guys sneaked it into the public comment to yesterday instead of today when the actual vote's going to be taken. So unless someone comes to the meetings every day, they may miss an opportunity to speak on what they really want. Also wanted to talk about recommendations from neighborhood councils. There are several letters from neighborhood councils that are expressing their opinions on some of these items, and it looks like they're just completely ignored. So I hope that you will take care of your responsibilities and get the people of Los Angeles involved. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Attorney, I think you wanted to address what was said?
Yes, just for clarification on the SB 1818 item, it was redrafted as an ordinance because of the substantive changes on the floor last week. It had more than sufficient...
Brown Act notice. Those placed on agenda last Friday for yesterday. There was adequate public hearing yesterday, and it was continued to today.
Thank you very much, and we will continue to make those announcements, both in public as well as online. And certainly have had, I think—this is the fourth meeting on that to ensure as much public participation as possible. Lucille Caruso is our next speaker. After that will be Chuck Tenon.
Hi. I'm one of these people who stand around and ask people for signatures on measures. Can you hear me now?
Yeah. If you face us, we'll hear you. Yep. There you go.
I'm one of these people who stand and ask people for signatures on incentives. And some people don't understand that what this translates to ends up on this. And generally, they walk by, and I try to get them to stop and say, "Are you for renewable energy?" "Yeah, yeah," or "No," or whatever. Or they don't really understand what this really translates into. And I can't sit there and read them all this stuff. But it talks about construction. It talks about new jobs. But I think if we look at it as how it applies to you personally, it's not just something that just happens out of thin air. It creates new business loans with green in mind, that we make it happen. We can have flooring companies, glass, fiberglass. It creates fluxing agents for brick and tile manufacturing, glass grit—for grit blasting, plastic for installation. And the economic possibilities are endless with green measures for new business loans. And perhaps when purchasing flooring or items for your home, to look at the percentage of green that is involved in what you're purchasing, because we all make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. And it may be of interest, this Friday, we're discussing our green building ordinance here at 8:00 AM in our Committee on Energy and Environment. So thank you for your testimony today. Chuck Tenon is our next speaker.
Good morning, council members, President Garcetti, Chuck Tenon. City council members, there's an African proverb, says it takes a village to raise a child. There's an American proverb, says it takes a city to raise its people. What do you plan to do about the future of the housing problem in this city and the long-range negative effects that it will have on the people that need a place to live? Sit back and wham, it fixes itself, or trim some of the fat in places that don't need it, and try to put federal monies and tax monies to good use that can keep this city healthy and help the programs and the people in this city that need help? Proposition S was passed to cover the police and the firemen, millions of dollars in additional revenue. And still, it's the city short. Proposition 94, 5, 6, and 7 bring billions of dollars to the state. City council members and city employees get raises. But what about the growing housing problem in the city and the people it hurts? Eliminate the programs, cut the LAHD personnel, take away their tools, don't have affordable housing or housing programs? The mayor's office claims there be millions of dollar shortcomings in the budget, and we still need more money. Should people pay more and get less, or people pay more and get help, especially in housing? How about the low-income and middle-class people that need a place to live? How does the city of L.A. plan to help these people and keep city housing programs alive? If the city of L.A. and the mayor plans to drastically cut the LAHD budget, lay off people, eliminate their housing programs, such as purchase assistance programs and rehab and others, you can't take away their tools to do their jobs and be an effective administrative force in housing programs in a city that has a major problem in housing that continues to get worse. Find cities out of money, find the money. Get more money and spend it wisely and not recklessly. Maybe the solution is give to get and not take away and face regret. Happy Valentine's Day to all of you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tenon, you too. And that's—one of the issues we're talking about today is affordable housing on item number 45. So stay tuned. James Ota is our next speaker. Then we'll go out to the San Fernando Valley for Sharon Brewer to follow that.
Morning, President Garcetti and LA City Council members. My name's James Ota, Ota Trucking, and I'm harbor trucking for a sustainable future. The Clean Air Act plan is for cleaning the air here in the harbor, to help eliminate the dirty air caused by trucks and other engines used in the harbor, improve the quality of air we all breathe, and to help eliminate health issues that are linked to this dirty air. The plan also wants independents to become company drivers, which will bring in the union. If this is to happen, the union will have total control of all the ports nationwide. There are two unions in the harbor, longshoremen and office clerks. Having the truckers become the thirds will make the port control be controlled by the unions. The elimination of independent drivers will also create the elimination of many trucking companies that are earning a living here in the harbor and their support groups. The riders' union strikers over with. It's took three months. They had suffering in their support groups. But there are—they will be coming back to work. We will not be coming back to work. We will be out of business. The 16,000 independent truckers are going through other requirements like TWIC, replacement of older trucks, and TWIC will eliminate many. The replacement of older trucks, starting on October 2008, will be the beginning of a new change for CAP will bring. The ports need to help these truckers replace these older trucks with financial assistance. Many people believe that nothing drastic will happen. Are the ports ready for the drastic changes that will happen? Let us work together to bring in the CAP plans for and help the current harbor truckers replace their older trucks and to stay in business, rather than to have some trucks retrofit, use that money to replace these older trucks. By 2012, all trucks in the harbor must be a 2007 model. Older ones will be banned from the harbor. It is brought to your attention that the trucks are eliminated in the long lines at the harbor.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay. Our next speaker will be Sharon Brewer from the San Fernando Valley.
Morning, Sharon Brewer. Public comment. Rules of L.A. City Council, amended January 2007, Chapter 4, Page 7, Number 24. Each member shall attend all regular and special meetings except for illness unless a leave of absence has been granted by a majority vote at a regular meeting at which a quorum is present. No leave of absence shall be granted if such will result in a quorum not being present for that meeting. Sunday, February 10, 2008, Times, Article, Page B, 3. Gala Opens New L.A. Museum. More than 1,100 prominent entertainment industry figures, artists, executives, and civic leaders gathered for the grand opening. Maria Shriver and Governor Schwarzenegger were there. Saturday's festivals featuring dinnertime entertainment by Lionel Richie. Actress Rita Wilson also attended, with tables costing $25,000 for silver, $50,000 for gold, or $100,000 for platinum. Event reportedly raised more than $5 million. Guest list included a who's who of museum directors. Mingling with them were artists from the local scene and elsewhere. All have works displayed in B.C.A.M., which is the Broward Contemporary Art Museum. On February 6, 2008, Agenda Item 29F listed the B.C.A.M. Grand Opening, February 9, as a special event. Fees and costs absorbed by the city, no amount given, blank check to abuse public funds. Motion included street closure, street services, DOT. Street closures usually have LAPD involved. Why should the city pick up the tab, amount unknown, for an event where the cost for a table is $25,000 to $100,000? What happened to the city having a major budget deficit and the possibility of services to the public being cut? This event had to do with a billionaire, and obviously, the general public—
Thank you very much, ma'am. I appreciate that. Our next speaker will be Michael.
They had private hired security there. We did give them approval to close a lane, so there wasn't city forces directing traffic, but private hired permitted security. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, for that clarification. And our next speaker will be Mr. Michael Hunt.
Good job to my colleagues that came down here yesterday who spoke up on civil rights. My thing is, like, open, we'll be pecking lightly, like woodpeckers with headaches. You guys need to fix this 4215. Stop violating the people's civil rights downtown. We're going to come in with a coalition with a blackout day, where all my people are in masks and in T-shirts. It's going to be like 30 of us, and we're going to call it Operation Blackout for City Hall, protesting—the civil rights violations that you guys have imposed on the people, all the way from the desert to the sea. Don't take it lightly. You guys should never violate anybody's civil rights. Civil rights is the most important issue. But we still have people down here that can't get it together. I see the 4215 has been put off again. Keep on putting it off. Pretty soon, we have a summary judgment. And it's only you guys. The tab is running. Every time I talk to my attorney, it costs $550 an hour. So make it easy on yourself, or make it light on yourself. Really understand that the tab is you guys, because you guys are the one that pay the taxes, the only one that's really going to really, really have anything to—say, probably the mayor probably step in and probably say it's unconstitutional. But the summary judgment, well, declared unconstitutional, and then it's time for the bill. You guys—I wish you guys would listen, but Operation Blackout Day is coming soon. I'm going to pick a very good day for that as well, too.
Thank you very much. There are no additional speaker cards for public comment. All right. Madam Clerk, there are 12 members present, so we should take the ordinances up first, please.
And that would be Items 2, 4, and 32A through double M. The ordinances on the agenda have cards, so those will be held for the speakers.
All right. All right. We have to vote on them one item at a time, though.
Well, you can vote on Items 2, 4, and 32 all at the same time. The other ones need to be held on the desk.
All right. Then why don't we—if that's all right—Miss Han? Miss Han? Are you rising to speak?
Yes. I'd like to reconsider 6 and 15. 6 I'd like to call special, and 15 I would like to continue for a day.
Great. All right. And we'll take that up after we vote on the ordinances. And we can open the roll on the ordinances. Again, state the numbers for the record.
Those are Items 2, 4, and 32A through double M.
Please open the roll on all three items. Please close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right. Miss Han, if you'd state again what you need.
I'd like to reconsider 6 and 15. 15 I'd like to just continue for a day, and I would like to call 6 special.
And just for the record, on item 15, that would be continued till next Tuesday, because council's canceled.
Thank you. That's fine.
I want to hear about it. Okay. Don't go too far. Okay. Thank you. Please open the roll on that item. For reconsideration. All right. The reconsideration is granted. All right.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay. Can't hear you. What did you say?
6 I'd like to call special.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Rosenthal?
Forty-three.
Forty-three? All right. Forty-three, actually, I believe we voted on it, went forthwith under—it was adjourned as a special meeting, so—why don't we hold that request on the table, and you and Mr. Garcetti can talk about this and see if you still need to do it? Next item, please.
Next item, Madam President, do we should take up item number 6 at this time, and that was called special by Councilmember Han.
All right. Miss Han. Miss Han, you're up. Number 6.
Yes. Is there anybody here from CRA? No one here from CRA, because I have some questions about this. So seeing nobody from CRA out here, why don't we table it? Why don't we table it for a while and see if somebody can get here? If not, we'll continue it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. You want to hold it on the desk, then, Miss Han? Okay. All right. We'll come back to it before the end of the meeting. Madam Clerk, next item.
Next item, Madam President, is item number 28, and that was called special for a card from the public.
All right. Mr. Arnold Sacks, if you would please come forward. Mr. Sacks, please.
Good morning. Thank you for starting my time. Good morning. When these items appeared on the agenda on the 29th, I questioned the council's actions about the items on the agenda then regarding awarding a bid, a business improvement district, for a pipeline franchise when you're accepting bids, requests for funds from companies. And the request for bids on business improvement districts to award franchises, it's a small bit of legislation. But like the saying, you can't change a leopard's spots. It's a window into council actions. You're requesting for bids, which are business improvement districts, for bids, and then you're awarding pipeline franchises in the open, without sealed bids, and then you're naming responsible bidders. If this company should award a bid, how many bids were taken on these requests for bids? Can the public—what was the window for bidding on the request for bids? What are the rules regarding requests for bids? Is this a city agency requesting these bids, for bids? What is the business of the city council here? And you're going to have requirements for neighborhood councils? You're interested in ethics for neighborhoods' councils? And this is the ethical approach you take to city business? There's something definitely wrong with this equation. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your answers.
Thank you very much, sir. There are no speakers in the queue. Madam Clerk, if you would please open the roll on this item. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right. Next item.
Next item is item number 29, and that was also called special for a card from the public.
All right. Again, Mr. Arnold Sacks on item 29. Mr. Sacks, you're waving. If you could just—are you indicating that you do not wish to speak on item 29? I just need to know for the record that you do not wish to speak on item 29.
I will speak. It's the same baloney. It's the same thing. Another bid for bid. Same action, same results. And I'll stay for—I'll stay for 32.
All right. Yes. And again, please open the roll on 29. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item.
Next item is item number 30, called special for a card.
Again, Mr. Arnold Sacks on item number 30.
I know—you—I'm reading your mind. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your answers regarding all three of these items on your agenda. Shows the ethical direction that this city council is taking. Maybe you can go for another term limitation vote. Good luck on your bid for bids. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please open the roll again. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right. Next item, please.
Item number 34, called special for cards from the public.
All right. There are a number of cards on this item, so I will call the speakers forward and ask them to just come forward and line up. Rosemarie Ashamala, Alex Sanchez, the Los Angeles County Public Defender, Johnny Godinez, Fannie Araujo, John Ciudadanos, Miguel Lopez. And we'll stop there for now. You can all come up—Rosemarie is the first speaker, followed by Alex Sanchez, and then someone from the County Public Defender's Office. If you could please line up so we can— And if we can have the speakers—everyone here seems to be for the proposal, so if you could limit your comments to one minute each so that we can— minute each, so that we can give everyone the opportunity to speak. Okay, please proceed.
Good morning, council. My name's Rose Marie Ashamala. I'm here representing Sunrise Outreach Center. It's a nonprofit agency in the Echo Park District. We do tattoo removal and violence prevention activities. We also do life skills training. I was fortunate to be a part of the CEAC. I strongly support everything that we came up with over nine months of painstaking meetings with agencies from all over Los Angeles, different geographical districts, races, ethnicities, backgrounds of people, over 30 agencies that participated in the process. I now feel a great sense of hope. I'm imbued with a great sense of hope for this blueprint that we've created, that now these agencies are not all struggling alone, but we've created this network that will allow us to tackle this very difficult problem in a systematic and organized manner, and I hope that you will find it appealing and will approve it today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Alex Sanchez.
Hello, councilmembers. My name is Alex Sanchez. I'm the executive director of a gang intervention agency in Pico Union called Homies Unidos. We've been doing gang intervention work in the area for the last nine years. For the first time, we see that community members that have been at the forefront of this work call upon to ask, to be asked, what can we do to solve this problem? And this has been a historical moment in which we have been participating in the process to really define the work that we do in the streets by our own peers and for our constituency. So it's for the best benefit for city council to adopt this measure, because it's something that has come from the people that are doing the work directly in the streets. And so it will help define and give a clear understanding to city council about the agencies that are doing this work and the level of expertise they have. So I would ask to be adopted.
Thank you very much. Someone from the County Public Defender's Office without a name?
Yes. Good morning, council. My name is Shalon Joseph, and I am a deputy public defender for Los Angeles County. On behalf of Mr. Michael Judge, public defender, I am expressing his support of the community-based gang intervention model. Mr. Judge fully supports this model. However, his hope is that the model incorporates the following recommendations. First, that the model develops approaches to identify, assess, and provide tailored treatment and services to developmentally disabled individuals who are often more susceptible to coercion, trickery, or peer pressure to engage in delinquent behavior. Second, that a method be outlined for individuals to earn their way out of the CalGang database, and that an efficient and timely method be developed to correct erroneous database entries. I was also... It was also requested that I specifically address the model. I am a member of the Community Engagement Advisory Committee and participate in developing this historic model. There is a phrase, "The whole is the sum of its parts," and this is what the model represents, a comprehensive set of services that provides the necessary parts to assist in making our youth...
Thank you very much.
...who are affected by gang membership.
All right, Johnny Godinez will be our next speaker.
Hi, good morning, councilmembers, councilwomen. My name is Johnny Godinez. I'm a coordinator for CAG intervention, also in the committee of the ADHOC Advisory Council. And I'm here to thank all of the efforts that all of the committee members put forth to this definition, and I'd like to thank also Tony Cardenas, councilman, Tony Cardenas' office, and all of the chair people with him, the members of the ADHOC on youth development and gangs violence. I'm here just also to say, you know, this is gonna be, I think, a beginning of accountability of who's really gonna be able to be able to have the license to operate and go out there and do the work that needs to be done. There's a lot of work for everybody, and we work with each other, the mayor's office, everybody that's involved. But this hardcore definition will define how the work is really gonna be addressed and the experience that needs to be done in the streets.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker, I think it says Manny or Fanny Araujo? Is it Fanny? Okay.
Good morning to you, city councilmembers. My name is Fanny Araujo. I'm a youth at Boyle Heights, and I just want to thank Gang Intervention and how they have helped us in keeping our community safe for us and having hid away from us, you know? Without them, we wouldn't know how to have not... I'm sorry. Not to have any problems with gang members, because we've been surrounded by a lot of them, and I just want to thank them, because we wouldn't know, us as youths, how to control our anger towards others. And while they've been helpful for us, and they have helped us succeed a lot without being gang members, with being gang members, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. John Ciudadanos.
Good morning. How we doing today? John Ciudadanos with the Youth Justice Coalition. Pretty much what we are bringing to this table today is a great opportunity to an alternate solution that has a lot of support behind it and so much positive effects. So by you allowing this intervention to proceed, you are also allowing the decrease of crime to happen and the possibility of a ceasefire within rival gangs. And most important, while you're offering an education that can be passed down from peer to peer rather than an attempt to build rapport between two opposites. Me growing up as a youngster, you know, living in L.A., I couldn't look towards, you know... For example, with all due respect, I couldn't look towards law enforcement to find support. You know, I had to look into a peer that kind of knew the conditions, well, he was similar to the conditions that I was living under. And the Youth Justice Coalition and gang interventions are organizations that are willing to back people such as myself up. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Miguel Lopez?
Good morning. My name is Miguel Lopez. Well, I wanted to tell you that I want you to know how it's like to go to school without these gang intervention workers. I used to go to the school. It was a probation school. I seen all these POs coming in and out, searching for students that had new tattoos and bad grades to lock them up. I seen a lot of my homies go in and out from stuff like that. They'll take them to the school hallway and strip search them and try to find something to lock them up. So basically, the school was run like a prison. But by allowing this gang intervention, crime will decrease. That's what we need, especially youth like me. This gang intervention include job opportunities for gang members or anybody that knows the game that will help them, even the youngsters. I'm saying that because it'll even help me and the rest of the gang bangers that are gang banging right now. So gang injunctions don't work. That's not what we need. Locking those up behind bars, throwing the key away, it's not the answer.
Thank you very much, sir.
But we need the support from this gang intervention.
Thank you. Our next round of speakers, and if you could line up at the podium, Noreen McLendon, Jose Montañez, Eric Green, Bobby Arias, Kenny Green, and Ron Daniels.
Good morning. My name is Noreen McLendon. I'm with Concerned Citizens in South Central Los Angeles. I'm also a member of the Community Engagement Committee and the Watts Gang Task Force. I just want to say that you can make history today by voting to adopt this model, but you can go further and make history by putting your funding where your vote is, so that there is adequate funding to fund gang intervention programs. This is a public safety issue. Gang intervention needs to be included in all public safety discussions, because only those people who started the gang violence will actually know how to end the gang violence. And so it's critical that you realize the importance of approving and adopting this model and looking at funding the agencies that produce services according to this model. And this was produced by the community and not academics, which means it stands more of a chance of working. Thank you.
Mr. Jose Montañez?
Hello. Yeah, my name is Jose Martinez. I am a student in the Youth Justice Coalition, Fila High School, where I'm here for the gang intervention as a 16-year-old student, knowing how the streets of L.A. is. I think by allowing the gang intervention will decrease the violence in our streets. It will decrease more... It will decrease less grades. It will bring more families together. And just knowing how the streets are, I think it'll be better just... I'm sorry, just that. Just, I don't know, just by allowing the gang intervention, being here will help us a lot. Thanks.
Next speaker, please. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Eric Green. I'm with the American Civil Liberties Union, and we're here to support the model today and to point out the most aggressive, the most enlightened, the most successful law enforcement strategy in the world will never do enough to cure the violence, to cure the harm that's been caused by too much crime and poverty and despair in our communities. Prevention and rehabilitation must join suppression as integral parts of a strategy to heal our communities. If the city intervenes intelligently before difficulties harden into dysfunction, before conflicts metastasize into crises, it will mean fewer lives lost, less danger for police, and less money wasted on jails and prisons. For those who for too long have felt abandoned, this approach sends a signal that the city cares about the lives and well-being of everyone in the community, and it recognizes that our problems of poverty and crime and despair and violence were not created overnight, they won't be solved overnight. We need to make a long-term investment into addressing them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bobby Arias.
Yes, Bobby Arias, president of communities and schools. Been at this for 20 years. Today, in many respects, is a historic day. It is the first time in the history of our country that the city council has an opportunity to send a message, not only to the country, but to our citizens here in L.A., and that is that we are a participatory government. This is the first time in 20 years that the entire community, both two-pronged prevention intervention, hardcore gang intervention, have had an opportunity to really have input into the process. This should not be lost. At our very best, we went from 52 homicides to two in one year. At our very worst, staff buried 36 kids in 2005. We have 98,000 kids in this great city between the ages of 14 and 24, out of school and out of work. Those are the kids we need to embrace. For all the kids that are watching today, know that today is a day about hope. Today is a day that the council people have said, "We are investing in your life." Please embrace this. Show the country that the City of the Angels is about hope. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arias. Kenny Green?
Hello. My name is Kenny Green with Toberman. First of all, I'd really like to take my hat off to Councilwoman Tony Cardenas and Councilwoman Janice Hahn for really taking a proactive approach to this issue that our city is facing. And no matter where you live in a city, this issue does affect you, whether you live in a gang-infested area, whether you live where there is no gangs, it affects you. And I'm really in support of this document, this very powerful document that's getting ready to be presented to you, that will address this issue. And to bring together with gang intervention workers and under leadership, great leadership like Chief Beck and Commander Gannon, we will deal with this epidemic that is playing in our city. And remember, the whole country is watching us, the whole world is watching us, and we got to do this right.
Good morning. My name is Ryan Daniels. I'm a retired probation officer. Today is a historic occasion, because for the first time in our nation's history, a diverse group of intervention workers and youth service specialists have come together with the specific objective of reducing and stopping gang violence and gang-motivated crime and violence. Historically, we have relied upon those law enforcement agencies, such as the Police Department, Sheriff's Department, and the Probation Department, to take the lead in resolving the problem. But it is foolhardy to think that the LAPD and the Sheriff's Department, who are in the business of apprehending and arresting law violators, is going to spend the time engaged in prevention and intervention strategies in hopes of reducing delinquency and crime. That ain't their business. As a retired probation officer who spent 33 years spinning my wheels trying to force the bureaucracy to do what it is mandated to do and provide the kind of level of services that is obligated to promote, you can forgive if you think they're going to promote programs that prevent putting themselves out of business.
Thank you. Your time is up. Our next speaker will be William Blinkie Rodriguez, followed by Stan Mohammed, followed by Danielle Arqueta, and Ellen Sanchez, and Javier Staring.
Good morning. It is a privilege to be here. It's been a long, long road for those of us that have been on this track for a lot of years. And I'm gonna use the word again, "historical," because it is historical, and I want to highlight that word, because this is a major move. The language that has been created in this document, this two-pronged approach, is mean. It's beautiful. It's what we need to move forward as workers that are doing the work, the practitioners that are implementing the work on a street level. How many times those of us that are here today have read language within RFPs that have asked ourselves, "Who wrote this RFP? Do they understand what we're dealing with in the community as it relates to the word violence?" And I know there's a lot of services needed. This is an integrated service delivery. It's a multi-pronged approach. The work we've created in the Valley with the San Fernando Valley Coalition on Gangs, with Ron Bergman before he retired, and now Mike Moore carrying the flag out there, that's been being implemented for a season. Please, let's do the right thing today. Let's make 34 fly and fly high in the sky, because it's gonna be a banner for the whole country. I believe that with all my heart. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
First, it's an honor to be present today. I believe we can really make a great impact on the country if the council adopt this model. For the first time in the history of intervention, we've been able to unite and come together to realize that the most important thing is saving lives. We're in the process of professionalizing this work, and we hope that this great body will do what it is, do what it takes to make this a reality, not only for this city but for the country, because in truth, the intervention work that's being done is very, very serious in regards to saving these young people's lives. Right now, black and brown is dying, so I'm hoping that this body will really take in deep consideration the importance of adapting this model and moving forward, and we thank you for your time.
Sir, if you could just say your name for the record, please.
My name is Stan Mohammed.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Danielle Arqueta.
My name is Danielle Arqueta. I'm a youth organizer at the Youth Justice Coalition. Today, I'm here on behalf of all the youth that I work with, including the students at our school, in support and asking for you guys to support the interventionist program, because as myself, when I was a victim of gang violence, I did look towards law enforcement to help me out, to find my shoes there, to, you know, come forth with that, to bring support. And as myself, I did not find that support. I actually found support from the local gang members in my neighborhood. I found support. Actually, the gang members in that neighborhood found my shoes there, you know, and I don't see that that's right. Law enforcement's here to protect and to serve and to find the person who hurts an individual in the streets, but as myself, it didn't happen that way. The gang member in that neighborhood found the shoes there. Can I finish my...
Yes, if you could grab it. We have more speakers behind you, so yes.
Well, I just want the councilmembers to support this bill, so that the people who actually know what to do can move forward and do it. But thank you for your time, and have a good day.
Ellen Sanchez, then Javier Staring, then Tom Hayden, and Akil Bashir.
Good morning. Thank you for your time, and I want to thank Councilman Cardenas and Hahn for spending so much time on this issue and bringing it to the importance that it deserves. I want to speak as the Chair of the Violence Prevention Coalition of Greater Los Angeles and the Director of the Santana House Youth Action Center in Councilman Reyes's district in Lincoln Heights. I want to ask you to move this proposal, this definition, into implementation with everything that you can bring to it, and that you please be the ones to pull together the city and the mayor's office to work closely with the work that the mayor's office is doing and find a way to pull those two sets of efforts together, and to be the ones to pull the county in and really make this a regional... this a regional, a strong regional effort. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Javier Staring. I'm co-director of the Office of Restorative Justice at the Archdiocese of Los Angeles. That is who I'm representing today. I also am a State Commissioner on the Juvenile Justice Commission, on the State Juvenile Justice Commission. I've been accompanying incarcerated youth and their families for over 17 years. And while there's many reasons to be very excited and optimistic about this model of intervention, one in particular that excites me is the fact that this is addressing a void that every other model of intervention, prevention, and suppression has, has not addressed. And that is the need to work with the kids while they are in detention facilities. We incarcerate so many of our youth, and we send them to places where practically everybody agrees that they come out worse than when they first went in. And this model really looks at the time of their incarceration as a
Thank you, sir.
time where we can work with them.
Thank you. Our next speaker, I believe, is Tom Hayden, followed by Akil Bashir.
Thank you, and good morning. I don't need to repeat what has been said, but the quality and the time and experience that has gone into it, this project commends itself, I think, for your consideration. I want to add two things. The, the great work done by Mr. Cardenas, his staff, Eduardo Hewitt, Rabbi Freeling originally, Michael De La Rocha, and others here deserves our respect. But the words need to be implemented, the policies need follow-up, and I would suggest, even in a time of budget crisis, you can double the number of gang intervention workers on the streets for about $3 million. So however you start, please follow up with some kind of funding. Secondly, I would suggest that there be a roundtable with Congressman Bobby Scott, who chairs the, the House Juvenile Justice Subcommittee, because I think collaboration with the federal government for funding would be highly, highly desirable. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bashir.
Hi, I'm Akil Bashir from Maximum Force Enterprises to Build Youth Empowerment Program and a few others, as well as being a council member, as well as being on the council with the CCVIP. I want to applaud you and your efforts. I want to applaud you for having this meeting. Definitely want to applaud the councilman for his diligent work as well as his staff, and Councilman Hahn and a few others who were diligent in the process. Let me be brief and to the point. We're in a war. You asked for a war map. We gave you one. Okay? This is a foundational piece that has brought together a collaboration from across the city of experts who have put in their diligent time to make sure they were able to produce a doable, workable, infrastructural, strapped developmental piece that we can move on. And it was tireless effort put into this. I would highly appreciate, as well as everybody else who was involved, if you get behind this plan and enforce this plan. Look, we're in this to win it. We refuse to lose. Taking a stand is not taking a seat. It is time for us to step up, get busy, and do the job. We have produced a plan, and hopefully you will see the need, the relevancy in that plan. Get behind it and support us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There are no additional cards pending from the public, so that will close the public hearing portion. And I believe, Mr. Cardenas, you may want to start off.
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask Chief Cooper from the Fire Department to come up, and also Chief Beck and Commander Gannon from the Police Department, and then after that, we'll have the, the committee come forward. Take a reminder about my time.
Morning, councilmembers.
Good morning. Basically, what I'd like you to do, if you would briefly tell us, if you've had, in the work that you do, have you had contact and/or interaction, or has the work that you, you're doing, for example, today, and where you're assigned, is it being complimented in any way by the intervention work that's going on out there?
I can certainly address that. I'm Charlie Beck. I'm the chief of LAPD's South Bureau. Pat Gannon with me is the commander of the Criminal Gang Homicide Group. All the people that were in, that made public comment, or the vast majority of them, are people that I work with every day. Janice Hahn, through the Watts Gang Task Force and her efforts with, with intervention. Pat, with his directly assigned folks that work full-time with intervention, have enabled us over the last year to reduce gang homicides in South Bureau by 30 percent. Huge difference. Homicide levels down to the lowest they've been in 40 years, largely through the work that we do with, with intervention. You know, it's, many people have said it a bunch of different ways here, but gang violence is not just the purview of law enforcement. There are pieces that I can affect with, with the resources that I have, but it is a much bigger problem than that. You know, we have to stop kids from joining gangs on the front end, and then we need hardcore intervention for when gang members, when things go wrong, when violence erupts. I could talk on this all day. I'll give you as much as you like, but I'll end with a good example. A little over two weeks ago, we had a 36-hour period in Watts of tremendous violence, gang conflict between two gangs who were traditionally friends but became rivals because of a homicide at a party. Through immediate partnerships and work between the police doing their job on the prevention side, and our longstanding partners, Intervention doing their work, we were able to stop the violence within 36 hours. We have not had a, an incident for over two weeks now. In the past, this would have never occurred. This would have gone on for months.
Now, that success, now that success, let me clarify for the people who are new to this. I know we talked about this the other day when we were in Watts and we had a hearing, but now, let me help you clarify, or if you could repeat. Now, that success of suppression and intervention in that community, that success was contributed by both intervention work that was being done and also with work that was being done by the Police Department?
That's exactly right. It's, they are not, we work together, but separately. We have very separate ways at addressing the same problem. And I think that is the, the point that has to be made, is that we both have the same goal. We just go about it in different ways, and it's very important.
So the outcome is hopefully safer streets and a reduction of serious violence, right?
Absolutely.
So the outcome objective is the same, but the approach and the work that's being done is very different?
Very different, but, but the, the strength is in the collaboration. We're both working on the same problem at the same time. This is a huge city. Even just my area of responsibility is very large. And so if I use my resources effectively in the same area that, that gang intervention is targeting its resources, we, what I can do is I can give them a temporary piece that they can improve on. I can, I can create a, an umbrella of safety under which they can work and create the long-term piece. And I think it's really important that, that the model be considered here, that the city keeps emphasis on gang intervention. This is the way that I can do my job better. And I've been working gangs in South Los Angeles for 30 years. If I didn't think this worked, I wouldn't be in front of this body.
So you, you are a believer that intervention has its place, intervention work has its place?
When intervention is done effectively with qualified people, it has a tremendous impact. And, and the city, the city has to fund the right people that have the right training in the right places, and then this will work.
You couldn't have led into my next question any better. My next question was, do you think the city will be better off by adopting an intervention model, a comprehensive intervention model like the one that's before us? Do you think we will be stepping in the right direction and creating the environment that you just described of making sure that when intervention programs are funded, we are funding the ones that actually are equipped and aware and knowledgeable and able to be effective, to be good intervention programs with good intervention work?
I, I think it's, it's key to use the city's limited resources effectively on this issue. You know, when we fund intervention programs that don't work, it takes away from the ones that do, and it draws attention to the programs, negative attention to the programs that prohibits further funding. So the selection of the right groups in the right places, to me, is everything. So I support the model.
So you do concur that the model will take us in that, better in that direction than we are today?
Obviously, the model is, is one of the, is one of the very many first steps that the city has to take.
Exactly.
And, and I think that, that it is, it is a great first step. I think this has to stay in the public eye. I think that, that all of the city has to realize that, you know, the City of Los Angeles helped spread this epidemic. You know, we export gangs all over the world, and as we were, as we initiated the problem, and we have to be there, initiate the solution also.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony and, and for your qualified ability to actually add to the dialogue today. Anything else, Mr. Gannon?
No, I completely support intervention, and it does work.
Okay, thank you. Now, Chief Cooper, what, what, what is the Fire Department, so some people might think, "What does the Fire Department have to do with intervention?" It's two different worlds, but we're all in the same community. What does the Fire Department have to add about having proper, good intervention work done within the City of Los Angeles?
Thank you, Councilmen, members of the city council. I'm here representing Chief Barry, the Fire Chief for the Fire Department, and I'd like to begin by saying that he is certainly in full support of all of the efforts that's been done under your leadership and members of the agencies that are involved in the gang intervention work. Certainly, the model that you've developed is something that Fire Chief sees as moving in the right direction for us to begin to do some positive inroads, or build on some of the positive work that others have done. Specifically, the Fire Department has had an ongoing dialogue and a building of relationships with the gang intervention specialists. As you are aware, Pastor Logan has a series of committees that meet periodically out of Bethel AME Church on 79th and Western, and most recently, the Fire Department was participating in a series of conversations with the gang intervention organizations with the objective of developing some specialized training with the gang intervention organizations and the Fire Departments that serve in the South LA area. What we see as important is that the firefighters need to have a path of safety in order to effectively do our job. We've been successful to this point with the help of LAPD, who worked very closely with us when we respond to reported shooting incidents. However, we see that we could actually do a better job by working with members of that community that could help us and LAPD respond safer once we get to that particular community, so that our intervention medical services can get to the people a lot quicker. So we're real happy about that conversation. We see that pilot actually happening sometime this year in South LA in collaboration with the gang intervention organizations and several community-based organizations. With regard to intervention, the Fire Department has always been involved in intervention. We've had a Fire Explorer program for well over 30 years, and although it isn't designed to specifically target at-risk youth, particularly for gangs, it does make a difference in terms of providing, us providing role models for youth, us providing them with life skills to be successful, and also for us giving them a positive alternative to gangs or any other type of ill that they might, you know, the path that they might be going down. So we're, we're happy that our Explorer program has expanded citywide, and we see this as something that could be added to the programs that the city is developing for youth as alternatives to gangs.
So in the program you just described, has there ever been a former gang person that actually has successfully gone through that program?
I can't say that there's been a former gang person, but I can say that we have, on numerous occasions, altered individuals' paths that was going down that particular route. And we have many testimonies by firefighters who grew up in environments like that, and because of the influence of firefighters and their fire stations when they were young, it was actually able to take them down a different path, and they currently work with us now as Fire Explorers.
Mm-hmm.
As Fire Explorer Advisors, excuse me.
I'm sure it's not nice to ask a firefighter if they've ever been a, a gang member, and I'm not asking that anybody start doing that, but I can promise you, in the program that you just described, I'm sure that there have been kids who would have loved to get out of a gang or what have you, found the path through your program, and realized that that's the better way of life, and, and no longer are associating or being involved in gangs. I'll say that myself. I just think, as an engineer, just the law of averages, the community that you're serving, the kids that you're inviting to be a part of it, and the kids that take part in it, I can guarantee you, some of those kids have been gang members. But thank God, through the program and being successful, I can bet you, they are no longer involved in gangs. They're involved in something much more positive, and they can see that they belong in this community, and they have a future. Thank you for, for your testimony, and thank you, gentlemen, as well, for, for commenting on this item. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I believe Ms. Hahn is our next speaker.
As an opening speaker, don't I get six minutes?
Oh.
Okay, thank you. All right, appreciate it. I'd like to bring the members of the task, excuse me, the committee that put this document together, if you could come forward, please. This is the Community Engagement Advisory Committee, at least a, a small portion of them. They've been meeting weekly for, for a very, very long time, and I just want to thank you, and on behalf of the people of Los Angeles, for all the diligent work and efforts that you put forward. Basically, what we have before us today, the motion that we have is to adopt a piece of work that you've been working on for quite some time, and something that has been both reviewed by academics, something that actually has been reviewed and utilized and asked for by people working on juvenile justice issues throughout the country. Can one of you tell me so far what's been the response, the typical response by those individuals, organizations, and levels of government throughout the country that have seen this model, and what has been their comment?
Good morning. My name is Susan Cruz. I'm here representing Sin Fronteras. I've been a member of the committee since approximately March of last year. We have shared this model for refinement with our colleagues across this country and also throughout the Latin American region, specifically Central America. They were amazed that finally someone put it to paper, what's been, what's been really been the modus operandi of gang intervention work for decades past. They have added to it, they have improved it, they have refined it, and they are excited, you know, to implement it in their own localities.
Okay, so basically, this is a model that perhaps should go beyond the City of Los Angeles. I hope it does. Members, something that we promised with this ad hoc committee of the city council is that we were going to afford ourselves as a city a high level of accountability when it comes to funding of programs that address issues of our youth, prevention, intervention, suppression, and even reentry. Today, we're talking about the intervention model and about, about us bringing better accountability when it comes to intervention. How many people are within your working group, so that people can understand what the input was here?
There's, there's 30 different agencies and individuals involved in the Community Engagement Advisory Committee. The committee represents the entire city and county of Los Angeles, from Watts to Venice to Boyle Heights to the San Fernando Valley. Together, the committee has more than 30 years' experience, not only on the streets, but working with this specific population, and helping to rehabilitate and positively transform the lives of communities and, and individuals. So we have been meeting every Thursday afternoon in City Hall since April of last year.
Okay, so basically, I'll say this. I think that this product was put together by the largest comprehensive group of individuals who actually have knowledge and have real-life experience about working in intervention on any streets, much less the streets of Los Angeles. So again, I want to compliment you for coming together. I know you're, you're pressed for time. I know that there's not any enough hours in the day to address the issues that you try to address in the community, so thank you once again. You have different levels of gang intervention in the model that, that is before us, and you mentioned something about license to operate. Can you define what you mean by license to operate?
I'm Gregory Thomas. I'm here on multiple levels, as a youth development coordinator, as a supervisor of gang intervention work in the Watts Housing Development Area, and a representative of the Watts Gang Task Force. And license to operate simply means the willingness or the ability to engage in high-risk conflict mediation sessions with individuals who are more likely to shoot and kill other gang members. The plan is simply more likely to shoot and kill other gang members. The plan is simply that relationship is developed through respect and trust, and more than likely, the individual who has the license to operate are individuals who were former gang members themselves.
Now, this license, does it have a seal of the state of California on it, the city of Los Angeles, the county of LA, the federal government, the President of the United States? What does this, where does this license actually come from? When does this license become a reality?
Well, the license actually come from the streets. I mean, in some cases, individuals go through the certificate program at Cal State LA and become certified gang intervention workers, but that in itself don't do it. Individuals have to have firsthand knowledge and insight in respect to how that culture exists and the various strategies and components that are necessary to deal with individuals who engage in that type of lifestyle.
Okay, thank you. I appear to be out of time. I think the next person on the list is Janice Han. I'll push my button again to, I'll push my button again and continue the dialogue.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas. And Ms. Han, you're our next speaker. And Mr. Cardenas, if you press your button again. Thank you.
Well, it feels now, I mean, I know Councilman Cardenas is going to probably draw a lot more out of you, but I really just wanted to stand here today and echo the hopeful remarks by everyone, that what we're doing here today is absolutely historic. It is a day that I have waited for since I began being involved in a very intimate way in the issue of trying to reduce gang violence in Los Angeles. And the work that we're doing in Watts with the Watts Gang Task Force in cooperation with Human Relations and LAPD is absolutely a microcosm of what this, the adoption of this language will mean for the entire city of Los Angeles and the entire, hopefully, region of the county of Los Angeles. And I really want to thank my friend and colleague, Councilman Cardenas, for really continuing to have the energy and the persistence and the patience and the deliberate thoughtfulness to bring together all these stakeholders at the same table. And the list of stakeholders and colleagues, if you get an opportunity, it's in the report, to even look at the number of people representing all walks of life and all aspects of this effort to end gang violence in Los Angeles. The fact that all of them even came to the same table at the same time was historic. And colleagues, why this is important is because we have never recognized this type of work, let alone honored this type of work, let alone paid what we should be paying for this type of work in the city of Los Angeles. And what this does today is really, you know, really put this into place. The first thing you do in life is speak it, and so we're finally speaking the language of gang intervention work out loud, on the record, and in a document that will allow us to go forward with this amazing two-pronged approach, along with law enforcement, along with human relationships, along with all the efforts of trying to get these young people and prevent them from joining gangs in the first place, but then if they are in gangs, working with them to try to get them out, working to stem the violence, and, most importantly, giving them hope of a productive life, where they can sort of be a part of their neighborhoods, be a part of their city, be a part of this society in a way that is positive. So to really formalize this language as important as we go forward and fund this. And colleagues, you know, Laura Chick is going to release tomorrow her audit and her blueprint and her roadmap for how we all get to this place where we can end gang violence in Los Angeles. And this language will be incorporated from now and forever, every time the city talks about gang intervention, every time the city talks about how do we bring peace to the streets in Los Angeles. And we need our peace officers, and I really wanted to thank Chief Beck and Commander Gannon. They said at our meeting in Watts that they're really there to provide the immediate peace, so that your work has a place, has a safe place to result in long-term peace. And that's really what we're doing here. I intend to help fund this effort, hopefully to the tune of about thirty million dollars a year, which will finally be able to be putting the money in your good, hard work, so that we have a chance, finally. It's the first time, and I know I'm going over, first time, though, I've ever honestly believed in my heart that we have a chance. We have a chance to end gang violence in Los Angeles and make this peaceful city, and it's because of the hard work that you all have done, are doing, and will do in the future. We owe you all a huge, huge debt of gratitude. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Mr. Cardenas has pressed his button for the second time, and in the meantime, Mr. Rosendahl and Mr. Zine have pressed their buttons. Mr. Rosendahl.
Yeah, just for a second. First of all, I have a feeling it's going to be unanimous here. I want to support when we go forward with legislation for that thirty million dollars so we can actually put money where our mouth is. Ms. Han, I appreciate your leadership on that. Just last weekend, over at LMU, there was a ballgame between Fairfax High and Westchester, and a kid threw a sign or a signal or something, and before you know it, somebody was shooting somebody. So this goes on all over the city. Augustine Contreras, who was a seventeen-year-old at Venice High School, was killed in the parking lot, and I thank Stan Mohammed and his Venice Two Thousand, who have done some safe passage work. But it's all about intervention and prevention. It's all a no-brainer. Thank you, Tony Cardenas, for your leadership, and Janice Han, your leadership as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Madam President. Is there a chief here, or has he left? Our fire representative, what about the police? Are the police folks still here?
Fire.
I see Cooper here. Are the police folks still here?
Not yet.
They left? Okay, I just wanted to acknowledge the comments from them. They have a lot of impact on this problem, and I want to acknowledge the fire department getting involved. Traditionally, the fire department wasn't involved. I know certain stations would do activities with the neighborhood, but it seems to be a broader scale now, so I want to commend you and the fire department in general for pitching and helping with this situation that's affected Los Angeles. Also, Blinky Rodriguez, who I know from his work in the valley, and your able-bodied sidekick, who's smiling, you guys have done a great job out there, and be it knowing that Blinky's son was killed in the drive-by shooting. He's devoted his life to try and turn this around. There's a lot of dedicated folks here. I want to also mention Martin Ludlow, because if we think back, it was Martin Ludlow who decided we needed to do something to analyze, to figure out a solution, and where's our money going, and what benefits are we getting. Also Connie Rice, with what she did. There's a lot of folks who've brought us to this point, and I know that if this city wants to remain the city of the angels, we can't have the killings and the violence and the gang activity taking place. And Bill Rosendahl said it best, it's not just South LA, it's throughout Los Angeles. So it affects this entire community of the city of the angels. So congratulations to all of you. I support this. Laura Chick's report, as you say, Janice is going to be coming out, but I think what we have now is a core of people who've really come together, different groups, different ethnicities, different religions. We got the rabbi here in front, trying to lead the way to bring about peace and tranquility to the city. We even have Tom Hayden here, from the protesters to helping peace and violence. Thank you, Tom Hayden. So we've come a long way from just throwing dollars away to see if something's going to work and something's going to make it better. I think we now have maybe a solution to bring that about. And Tony, your hard work and dedication to make this happen along with Janice, the committee, thank you all. So I just want to show my support and appreciate all the work you've all done. Thank you very much.
Mr. Labonde.
Thank you very much. Madam President, and to my fellow colleagues on the council who have districts that have greater challenges, it affects all of us. And I just wanted to stand and thank those of the committee members who work hard. Often, I hear your passion when you speak on issues. I see the importance of this, and also I see the importance of the leadership that's in the council chambers now. The leadership's going to take a new direction from this table, from the communities. It's so important, because the only way we're going to be successful is if we have a play, if we have a design that brings everybody to the table and works forward, and see that every individual in this city has a value. And every individual in this city does have a value. And to break this cycle, to engage and uplift, is, I think, what is one's only real mission in life. And whether you're a teacher, or a counselor, or a coach, a gang intervention worker, to be able to extract that from somebody, you do the real work. So I just wanted to thank everybody involved. And I do want to thank Mr. Cardenas, because I know you are extremely focused and passionate to bring this all together. Thank you very much.
Ms. Grul.
Yeah, okay. Did you say Ms. Grul? Ms. Grul, yes. Thank you. And I just wanted to stand up as well and thank the committee and Mr. Cardenas and all the people who were involved in this, because when you talk about gang intervention and how important it is, and that it starts from some even gang intervention early age, investing in programs, and, you know, you hear that old adage of, you know, you invest in their future by investing them at a young age, and that, you know, preschool, kindergarten, all of those things, and after-school programs are critically important, but also later on, when you can help reach that young person who may be going in the wrong direction, and how we can do that. Because you will spend a lot more money on LAPD officers going out and doing it than you would if you had actually those programs that work. So we're very excited about what this committee has been doing and the opportunities, as well as to see Ms. Chick's audit, to see where we can make improvements and really do that kind of evaluation and looking at it. So I just wanted to stand up and say thank you for your leadership on this. It is one of the most important issues for our communities, and I think for the future of the city to be able to say, we're addressing the gang issue, not just with enforcement, but with intervention and ways in which we can help save the lives of those kids. Because if they end up going to jail, we even spend more money on those individuals. And when they come out of jail, oftentimes, that experience limits their ability in the future to achieve their goals, to get a job, to be able to have a great life. And I think there are a lot of programs that help people, but if we can stop it from ever happening, that's the best way to do it, and intervention is the way. So I just wanted to stand up and say thank you. We look forward to the next steps, and as we talk about our budget this year and how we're going to invest those dollars, I think between the work that the committee has done and what the audit will show us, it'll be a great pathway to move forward. And I do want to just mention Ms. Han, who's personal passion on this has been incredible, from her experience of talking to those parents and those mothers who have been impacted by their kid belonging to a gang, or in fact, not belonging to a gang, and being the victim of that violence. So, good work, and we look forward to more of this discussion. Thank you, Mr. Cardenas.
Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the patience of my colleagues and also the support in allowing our committee to do the work that it's doing and to bring us to this point to take this giant step forward on making sure that we have the model in order for us to move forward and do things right, and do things better than we have. I want to remind the taxpayers and the constituents that to incarcerate a youth in the state of California costs over ninety thousand dollars a year per youth. To incarcerate an adult in the state of California costs well over forty thousand dollars a year per person to incarcerate. That's the same tax dollars that they're not sending to the city of Los Angeles so that we can take care of business here in the city and provide a better lifestyle and also safer streets for the city of Los Angeles. Now, when it comes to the programs, intervention programs, the cost to serve a constituent through one of your programs, is it anywhere near ninety or forty thousand dollars a year?
Not at all.
So not at all, not even close? I mean, you're smiling because you're saying, wow, what we could do with that money, and how many people we could serve, and how much safety could we provide for the community. That's how I feel, and I know you know that. But the fact of the matter is, the state of California has documented what the average cost is for an intervention and prevention program that has been funded through the state of California at a measly hundred or so million dollars a year for the last seven years. At least, they've been fortifying themselves with understanding how much are they spending per person, and it's only coming out to about thirteen to fourteen hundred dollars per person to get service in the state of California to keep that individual out of jail, and to not spend ninety to forty thousand, or forty thousand dollars a year. Now, that's smart-on-crime taxpayer dollars, in my opinion, when you're spending thirteen to fourteen hundred dollars instead of spending forty or ninety thousand dollars per person. That's what intervention does when we do it right. So the item before us today is about the city of Los Angeles having the will and the ability to look in the mirror and say, what do we need to do to do it right? We have intervention programs in the city of Los Angeles. I feel good about many of them, but the bottom line is, I don't want it to be how somebody feels. I want it to be that we know that we're funding what we should be funding, that we're getting the outcomes that we deserve to get with the taxpayers' dollars, that they're actually being effective in providing safer neighborhoods throughout communities. One of the questions I forgot to ask the officers is, do we have enough intervention programs to complement the amount of work that needs to be done? And we all know that the answer, those of us who are working on this issue, we have not been providing enough funding. But before we get involved in more funding, what I promised the city of Los Angeles is that we will have more accountability. We will have a system where we're actually justifying and proving that the money that we are spending today is, in fact, being spent properly. And that's what today is. Today is the first giant step to making sure that we have something to put our programs through, to be able to compare our programs with, and say, if you're doing this work, then you deserve to be on the list to be funded. And hopefully, we'll have the funding and be able to fund the program. But if you do not fit this model, then you are not doing intervention. Maybe you're doing something else wonderful, like prevention. Maybe you're doing something else, like suppression. Maybe you're doing something more on the reentry level. Now, get in line for that funding, if you can prove that you do that well. But today, we're here to talk about whether or not we're going to adopt something that finally says to the city of Los Angeles, we won't fund a program unless it is defined in this model in some fashion, and they can prove that they are going to do true intervention work. I'll push my button again.
Next speaker is Mr. Reyes. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to thank my colleagues, Councilman Han and Cardenas, for the yeoman's job of being there and making sure this progresses, and the folks who are involved, your tenacity and your patience for making sure we need to hear everything that needs to be heard. In light of that statement, I know there's some good programs out there. I think of, what always comes to mind, because they've done an incredible job in my district, is Astic Fire Crew. I keep asking, what's their input, the relationship with the federal government, job training, actually getting folks out of the neighborhood into other environments, give them that sense of relief. Are we taking advantage of those experiences? Because I didn't see their name on the list. I don't see them, the name of the report. So I want to make sure that we don't miss the opportunity to be inclusive in this process. Can anyone speak to that on the table, please?
Yeah, Astic Rising in particular. They've seen the model, and everyone's in agreement of it. And I would actually like to say that, in terms of the people that are mentioned here, this has the breadth of the whole city, including Lincoln Heights and Boyle Heights, but Astic Rising in particular has seen it. But I did want to acknowledge, if I may, including Astic Rising, all the intervention workers that are seated here today, as well as those in the committee, because it is their experience. I'm not a gang intervention worker, but I've been able to help facilitate this process. So not only them, but throughout this city, there's interventionists here, and if we couldn't have a moment to have them stand, I think that would be great, to honor their work, because they're doing this twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and including in your district. So if you are an intervention worker or part of this committee, please stand.
One of the most, I guess, shocking realizations I had when I started working in the neighborhoods in a council office, is when I was meeting the intervention workers, the gang intervention workers, and they were describing these harrowing experiences of what they had to do to find out, just basic information. And growing up in the neighborhoods in Cypress Park and Lincoln Heights, I know what they were talking about. But the fact is, many of them have had choices to leave, but they don't. They keep coming back, and they stay focused, and they keep putting themselves in harm's way. And that's something that they do without, as has been said, without compensation, without police protection. And to me, that's just an amazing example of dedic- And to me, that's just an amazing example of dedication and commitment to see that improvement. So I thank you all for doing that. But at the same time, let's be accountable for what the city is not doing. I keep saying, this cannot be a public relations feel-good budget item. And today's Economic Development Committee, we talked about our accountability of creating jobs. And that, to me, is going to be one of the pillars of this change, is changing the psyche and culture of our department heads, the people that run the airport, the harbor, the every major economic engine that is being run by a public entity that benefits from a public tax dollar. That mindset has to change because of the simple fact that it's not just a feel-good, "Let's get these folks out of our hair and move on, because we're not going to be babysitters." That's an attitude that has to change, and I'm glad to hear this, because incrementally, I believe we'll get there. So thank you very much. Keep working hard.
Mr. Zein for the second time, followed by Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Zein?
What?
You pressed your button for a second time?
No, they still kept it on for before. I didn't want to second that.
All right, well, would you like to speak?
But thank you for the opportunity. Congratulations once again.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas.
Yes, thank you. I want to apologize to the committee members. There's so much that we could be talking about today, because this document is so well-written. Every sentence, every line has a purpose, has its place. Every piece of it is very powerful, and it is actually very impactful, if in fact, we use it. So today, I just want to promise you that I feel very confident that we will be adopting this today, and that we will be using it, and that your job, unfortunately, is not going to stop, as far as coming together as the group, working with the city, helping us, keep us on point to make sure that we do it right. So I just want to thank you for the future efforts that you're going to be involved in. But I want to ask you a question, because I want to end, so that the average Angelino who's watching this, who's paying for these lights to be on, and for us to be in this room, I want them to understand how serious this is. Does it ever happen that someone will be involved in a random shooting because the gang that they're involved in, or what have you, tells them, "This is what you need to do to prove yourself, or to become a gang member," what have you? Does that ever happen?
Yes, it happens. It happens far too often. I mean, let's face it, we live in a culture that hasn't clearly been paid attention to. I mean, young people grow up and are coached to grow up to be gang members, to be killers. Actually, it's an honor. In many of the challenged communities that we serve, this population that we serve, it's an honor, it's a code of honor for a young person to grow up to be a killer, to grow up to engage in what we call gang-related motivated violence, by way of committing homicide. As we speak, Mr. Chairman, there's a very good chance that young people throughout those challenged communities that we serve are talking about the possibilities of killing someone, of actually committing a homicide, as we speak.
And not only on other gang members, not that it's acceptable at all for anybody to be killing anybody in this city, but my point is, not just to other gang members, they may be contemplating doing that and randomly shooting somebody else. I have a friend who happens to be, had a young man, who, he was in the Big Brother program, and his little brother Dexter was a victim of such an exact occurrence. And it happened in Jan Perry's district. And what a small world. I get a call from this guy saying, "Are you going to come to the press conference in Jan Perry's district about this kid Dexter?" And he used to tell me about him. He says, "My little brother Dexter's dead. Got shot five times in the back of the head on a Sunday morning, at about noon, because he was going to the store, walking to the store just a block or two from his home. Lost his life. A car pulled up behind him, a few doors down. A kid ran out of the car with a gun, ran up to the back of his head and shot him five times." How do we know that? Because they caught him. And he spilled his guts. He told them exactly why he did it. It was a random shooting. He said he was part of a gang, and that was what he was supposed to do. And they were driving around for two hours before they found somebody on a Sunday afternoon, and killed him, didn't know him. Does that happen?
Absolutely.
If we don't increase proper intervention activity in the city of Los Angeles, will it continue to occur, and will it grow?
Absolutely.
You see, ladies and gentlemen, a police officer cannot, is 99.9% unlikely to have interfered in that incident, unless, by happenstance or chance, the vehicle happened to have a broken taillight, and they would have pulled him over and found that they had guns in the vehicle. Or if a police car happened to be driving around the corner at that exact moment, it could have been prevented. But that's a 99.9% chance that we're counting on. You can't police your way out of that situation. And that is happening throughout community after community in the city of Los Angeles. We have a representative from the mayor's office here. It's my understanding he wants to comment on, Jeff, can you come up, please? Comment on the mayor's offices, how they feel about this item.
Good morning, councilmembers. I just want to offer my thanks and commend Councilman Cardenas and all the members of the ad hoc committee for the work they've done on this issue, but more importantly, for the people from the community that have actually worked on developing this definition. Our office, thanks to the graciousness of the committee, actually invited us to make some of our own recommendations and suggestions for the definition, and those were incorporated. And, but more importantly today, I really just want to thank, I mean, the last, you know, two weeks ago, we had a spate of violence, an uptick of violence in South LA. And I got called in the middle of the night, and was out there quite a bit over that weekend, and had a chance to work very closely with a number of our gang intervention workers. And it was really great to see the cooperation between the mayor's office, the council office, LAPD, and these guys who are out there trying to keep the peace. And really, for me, it was a microcosm of what we need to do on a larger scale throughout the city of Los Angeles. And I think actually even the way this definition was created, it was very inclusive. No one, you know, felt like, "Well, this is our definition. We got to drive this." It was a very inclusive process. And I think it really sets the kind of example and the tone that we really need in this city, in terms of really helping us overcome, not just how we create a definition of what we mean by gang intervention, but really how we move forward in terms of the work we do in the city related to gang violence. So I just want to offer our support for this, and I do hope that the council will adopt this this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I want to, I want to admit to all of you that I didn't ask for the job to be the chairman of this committee. This committee was created by former councilmember Martin Ludlow. And he came to me, and he said, "We've got to do this." And I said, "You know what? You're right." And I had worked on this as a state assemblyman. And then I actually had a sigh of relief. I said, "Wow, you know, what a load off my shoulders. Martin's going to carry it." Well, Martin is no longer a councilman. He went off to do something else. God bless him. But the thing is, there I am, councilmember Garcetti, now president, says, "I need you to chair the committee." I said, "Okay, fine." I'm tired of it. I really, really am tired of working on this. But I'm not going to quit. Dexter needs us to stop this. A councilman was driving his son home from school the other day. His son is now five foot eight. He's 15 years old. He's a Latino male. He doesn't even live in one of the worst communities in the city, not the toughest community in the city, just your average, blue-collar community. And the councilmember pointed out to him, he said, "Son, you like to ride your skateboard from your house, our house, just four blocks to your friend Georgia's house. I'm not going to let you do that anymore. I'm not going to let you do that." The son of a councilman in the second-largest city in the country, the son of a councilman, cannot protect him. My son is not allowed to ride his skateboard outside of, in front of his home. And believe me, I'm worried about my kids when they're just outside my front yard. That's my son. That's my son. I am ashamed. I am ashamed of the fact that I can be a state legislator in the most powerful state in the nation, and I cannot even protect my own children. I am ashamed of the fact that we are such a powerful, capable city, and we cannot protect our children. I am proud of the fact that we have police officers today who embrace intervention work. That didn't happen 10 years ago. That didn't happen 20 years ago. And I'm ashamed of the officers and anybody in brass in the police department who is unwilling to at least open their mind and be constructively critical about the intervention work that needs to be done in this city. Shame on them. Shame on them. You know, people have accused me of being emotional. I pray to God, I pray to God, that we carry this kind of emotion in every single thing that we do as public servants, not just as electeds, but as bureaucrats, people on the front line. And one of the things that I want to remind every single department that has come through my committee, yes, we have a lot of work to do. Yes, I may be disappointed in the work that we've done in the past, but I have constantly said, in my committee, I am not here to beat people up. I am here to remind people why we are here, the work that needs to be done, all the work that we haven't got to do, that we still have to do. And my job is to try to be constructive and make sure that we do it, and that we do it better, and that we not hide behind our fears, that we not be afraid to lose our job, that we make sure that we are there, and we can be proud of the work that we do, and that you are supported in what you do. Today, the controller of the city of Los Angeles, hers, somebody who did a report that she's going to come out tomorrow with, is saying something, in my opinion, premature. They are saying that all future gang work needs to be moved into the mayor's office. Maybe, 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 maybe. Let's prove where it should be. Let's prove how we should do it right. Let's prove how we can do it better. Let's prove where it belongs. That, to me, ladies and gentlemen, is politics. And politics has driven intervention and prevention funding in this city for close to 30 years. And our streets are not safe enough for our children. So I'm saying publicly to every single person who cares about this issue, if you want to add and provide leadership on this issue, I welcome it. I'm tired. I'm tired. If somebody wants to do it better than what we've been trying to do for the last two years, I'm all ears, Mr. President. I'm all ears, Mr. Garcetti. I don't want to have to have a gang committee, but we have to have it. I don't want to have to chair that committee, but we have to do it. Again, it's a shame that we do not protect our children in this city the way we should and the way we can. It's time that politics not dictate the policy. And I am not going to allow that to happen on this issue, intervention, prevention, suppression, reentry, anything that comes through that committee, anything that is under the purview of that committee, will not be a political matter. It will be a policy matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas. And with that, would you please open the roll, Madam Clerk? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. 13 nines. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Madam Clerk, next item.
Madam President, item number six is being held on the desk for CRAH report. I understand they are here, so if you wish to take up that item at this time, that was called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Okay, Ms. Hahn, you're up. Ms. Hahn.
Item six, Ms. Hahn. Item six.
Ms. Hahn, I believe this is your item to call special.
Thank you. Do I have someone here from CRA? Look, colleagues, the only reason I wanted to call this special was because this is an increase in some money that we're giving a contractor to do work at the 103rd Street Blue Line Station in Watts. And one of the complaints I've been getting about that station, particularly in light of the discussion that we just had, in terms of potential gang violence, and everything we can do to make the community feel safer, I've been hearing from people who use that station, particularly the women, the senior citizens, single women, that the lighting is not as good as it should be. So before I approve more money to this contractor for improvements at this station, I wanted to know, is any of this money going towards improving and upgrading the lighting, both on the platform and in the parking lot? No sound. Hang on. Hang on.
Okay.
Okay.
This contract is for the Blue Line Parking, the 103rd Street Blue Line Parking Lot.
Okay.
This is not the Watts Historic Station. We are working on the Historic Station. There will be lighting at this station.
So this is just the 103rd Parking Lot?
This is 103rd Street Parking Lot on Grand E, that goes from 103rd down to 106, where we're putting a new parking lot.
Right. Actually, lighting is a big issue there as well.
Okay. There is public lighting, public street lighting, and we installed pedestrian lighting for the parking lot and for the walkways.
And is this contract a part of that?
This contract is part of that, yes.
So you will be installing it, or you have installed it?
There are lights installed. Now, we can...
Yeah, I've been hearing complaints.
Okay. We can look at the lighting again, and if we need to add some lights, we can add some lights to it.
So that's what I'm asking, is this contract part of, is lighting a part of this?
Yes, it was. Yes, we installed...
So we're proving this after the fact?
Yes, yes. This is a change order after the fact, yes. Now, if we want to add some more lights, we can add some more lights under a different contract.
Well, you know, and colleagues, these are issues that really bug me, really bug me, because what's before us today is a request to execute a change order, you know? And you've already done it.
Yes. It was, it involves quite a bit of things that we were not prepared for. This is property we bought from Union Pacific Railroad, and it had fiber optic cable that was in the wrong place. It had railroad signal lines that were in the wrong place. It had massive foundations that belonged to the carbon, about 1,000 cubic yards of concrete we had to get rid of. So this just really mounted up. Now, to stop the contract, it would cost more money to stop the contractor than to...
So you already did it?
Yes, it's already been done.
And now you're asking us to agree to that?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, I don't appreciate that, and I don't know how my colleagues feel, but we, you know, we can't continue to operate like that, particularly, again, if it's an issue that I have concerns about in my district, and I've got complaints about lighting, it would be an opportunity, maybe I didn't like the lighting you put in, which clearly, I think there's issues. So now you're asking me to prove something that you already did, you already installed it, and a lot of people think it's not good enough. So you put us in a difficult situation.
Right. We had a consultant do a lighting study before we put the lighting in, and it was supposed to be adequate.
Did you talk to people who actually use it?
This is the parking lot that we just constructed. It had never been constructed before.
Okay, well, do you talk to people in the community about what's adequate and what's not adequate?
Well, we put in a lot of light, so I'm... Well, we put in a lot of light, so I'm not, we'll look at it again, you know?
All right.
We have to go by what the consultant recommends.
Well, you know, I would take people's words any day over consultants.
No.
You've got to talk to people who are out there who are using it, and again, I've gotten complaints in my office about it, so.
Well, we'll look at it again, I'm sorry.
Could you look at it?
We certainly will, yes.
Okay. I mean, I'll agree to approve something that you've already done, which I don't like to do, but under the condition that you take a look at the lighting, talk to the neighbors, find out if it's adequate or not.
Okay, and this is the 103rd Street Parking Lot for MTA, as opposed to the Historic Train Station.
Right, right. I get complaints about lighting at everything associated with that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. Our next item, I'm sorry, we had to open the roll on that, sorry. It was already done, so, sorry about that. Open the roll, please. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item.
Next item's item number 39, and that was called special for cards from the public.
Mr. Arnold Sachs, please, if you would come forward.
Good afternoon, thank you very much. Very quickly, item 39H is a special item that's been called, who knows what. I just would, with my apologies to Gloria Allred, I just think the title of the special item or special event should be changed from "Who You Are Worth Fighting For" to "Who You Are Worth Standing For," and eliminate the word "fighting." Gloria will have a field day with that one.
Thank you very much. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item.
Next item's item 44, that was called special by Councilmember LeBange Plumb and Transportation Committees. The report has been submitted and public hearing has been held.
All right, and for the record, the public hearing has been held. We do have two individuals who are here, so I will read their names into the record. Lisa Sarkin here on behalf of the Studio City Neighborhood Council and Barbara Monahan-Burke again on behalf of the Studio City Neighborhood Council. Mr. LeBange. All right, Ms. Gruel, if you would go first since you're the chair of the committee, and then Mr. LeBange.
Thank you. Colleagues, this is before you, it was before our planning committee, joint committee yesterday, is the regional transportation plan. This is one, some people ask, does this mean where our, sorry, I was looking for my notes here, where our projects are. In fact, what this is, there are two kinds of regional planning proposals that we have. One is through SCAG and one is through the MTA, and both of which we think is important that the city have a position in which they talk about some of the important aspects of that and to ensure the eligibility for some of the funds that will be coming forward, because it is important to be able to outline those items. And you'll see in here that there are different parts of this degree of project readiness, high-speed regional transportation, conformity with a clean air and policy growth forecast, some of the things that we think are important as it goes forward. You will be seeing, colleagues, another document that will be coming back to the city council, which will be the comments by, for MTA's regional plan, which includes a number of projects. And one of the challenges has been that these lists and these projects have been old, ones that were proposed in the past, ones that may have been proposed because they were the most competitive for that funding, but not necessarily our priority. And so it goes back to the importance of having a transportation strategic plan for our own city and projects that we think are priorities. So what you have before you today are the comments on SCAG's 2008 draft regional transportation plan. And again, this went to our joint committee yesterday. We had a great conversation about the intersection and importance of planning and transportation. And so I would ask you today for an I-vote, and know that we're also going to be coming forward in the next few weeks with a much more detailed plan that'll be part of the MTA long-range planning. So I would ask for an I-vote today. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you very much. Now, let's see, Mr. LeBange has pressed his button, but would someone else like to? Ms. Hahn, always reliable, thank you. Ms. Hahn, we will bump you ahead of Mr. LeBange.
Oh, thank you. Well, I just wanted to take the opportunity to highlight a couple of things that are in this regional transportation plan that are of particular interest to my end of the world, which is the ports of Long Beach and Los Angeles. A lot of our transportation goals have to do with the goods movement industry. And, you know, we need to realize that this goods movement industry certainly is a huge part of transportation issues, but also a huge part of our economy. I noticed the economists were talking even about the writers' strike, and for the length that the writers have been on strike, it's, they've figured out it's cost us $3 billion to our economy. Well, when the ports are shut down, it's a hit of $2 billion a day to our economy. And so you have a lot of focus on the entertainment entity, which is great, but when you put that in context, the goods movement industry is a much bigger and has a much bigger impact on our, not only our regional, national, but certainly our global economy. One of the things in this plan, which I think, I know Greg Smith has focused on a tremendous amount, is the high-speed rail component. And people are talking about anything like the MAGLEV technology, but in this regional transportation plan, it talks about the cargo piece, the freight piece of this high-speed rail. And I think that is something that this whole region needs to get behind. We're talking about the congestion and the emissions that dirty trucks have on our region. This kind of technology will have zero emissions to move that freight, and I think that's one of the key pieces of this regional transportation plan. Also wanted to point out that the ports have enacted their own fee to help pay for some of the projects that have been highlighted, the bridges, the SR-47, which will be a designated highway that really goes right into Terminal Island and bypasses a lot of our streets, grade separations. And the ports have enacted a container fee, which, under the plan, will sunset when these immediate projects have been built. But I think we, as a city, ought to urge the ports to continue this kind of dedicated revenue stream to pay for projects long-term in the future. These are kind of immediate projects that will just sort of have a stopgap emphasis on goods movement. We know that the goods movement industry could possibly triple in 20 years, and I don't think our infrastructure is anywhere close to accommodating that. And if we want to talk about keeping business here, it's the landside congestion that will drive business away from our ports more than any kind of a fee or environmental regulation that we put on them. So I think we ought to urge them to continue that fee long-term indefinitely, to pay for projects throughout the region that are impacted by the goods movement industry. So, thank you, that's what I wanted to say.
And thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. LeBange.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to thank you. Is there any staff here on this issue? Hi. How are you? Good. Anybody from the CLA's office here? Because there's one issue I want to see us do more of, is advocate, advise, and make awareness of certain things. In this plan, do you know, does it do anything for pinch points in our freeway system?
For bottlenecks, I'm Miles Mitchum with LADOT.
Hi, Miles.
Yes, well, yes, there are programs and projects in the RTP to address bottleneck issues. That is a well-known priority.
Right.
It's part of the corridor section, the arterial program project section of the RTP.
Yeah, I just think it real big. And then also, I think, Mr. Miller, with you there, you could do two things at once, I know, but it would be great to have a listing, and I don't know if it's in a workroom in one of our committees upstairs, that lists this so we could see it, because what happens today is the 13th of February, and before you know it, it's the 13th of November, and another year passes. I think it would be helpful in maybe some of the committee rooms that we list some of these big projects out there in some graphic way to watch it, to check it. I remember when I had a job in a print shop, they had a little trail that it said where jobs start and where jobs finish, from the beginning to delivery. And I think we should focus on this, because before you know it, it's another year, it's almost another decade, when we've all been working on these particular issues. So I think it'd be real important to focus on this. And I know there's one measure that I have around somewhere to get an advocacy group for the freeway system. We do have a freeway system that does have bottlenecks and pinch points that just on the 5 North in the city of Burbank, if they corrected the Alameda on and off ramp, it would relieve the tension that goes all the way back to Las Feliz Boulevard, some four miles away. On the Harbor Freeway at the 110 and the interchange, the 1965 off ramps need to be modernized and ease the flow. The missing links of the freeway systems of off and on ramps, et cetera, we should focus on it. Again, you know, you have to have a playbook, and the playbook has to tell you which plays to run, but it has to be visual. So I hope we could do that somehow, some way. Mr. Miller, look, maybe check with the transportation chair and see some of those rooms up there with lists, some of these projects that we know are on approval. And Mr. Davis, is that correct?
Yes, Councilman.
You just joined the table there, I know. You have anything you want to add to what I was saying?
One of the other comments you'll see this afternoon on the MTA long-range transportation plan is our recommendation that Caltrans consult more closely with the city in terms of recommending the prioritization of these freeway projects, because, again, the city has a lot to say about which of these choke points, there are choke points throughout District 7, but the city needs to have a greater role in prioritizing which of those projects gets funded and where they stand.
And do we know the relationship that's different between Los Angeles County and, let's say, Orange County and Caltrans? Because I know Orange County has done a tremendous work to upgrade their facilities over the last 15 years. We could maybe look at that. Madam President, I thank you. Madam Chair, I thank you for your leadership on that. And Madam Hahn, if I could say, Madam Hahn, I thank you for bringing all the shifts to sea safely into San Pedro. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. LeBange. There are no further speakers in the queue. Would you please open the roll? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Next item, Madam President, is item number 45, and that was called special by Councilmember
Mr. Garcetti?
Sure, I called this special. I think there's a number of amendments that have improved. We've got some ones Ms. Gruel looked at, Mr. Parks. There is public cards. I would move to reopen the public hearing myself and to hear from folks, but I think it's probably better to do right after the amendment, so people know what we're talking about. That seems to be a reasonable and fair thing to do. So why don't we hear maybe from the council members who have introduced amendments, so they can describe what those amendments do, and then public comment can address any of those small changes that have been added. Okay? So I know Ms. Gruel has one, Mr. Parks has one, and maybe Mr. Reyes did as well, but...
Just to recap, Mr. Garcetti.
We would do the members first on the amendments and then we could comment on...
Yeah, let's do the members, and then we can determine the time you want...
It's doing a press interview, so...
Members, you can press your buttons. Ms. Gruel is first.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. Colleagues, I just wanted to outline for you Amendment Number 45C, which is before you, is somewhat a clarification on what we adopted last week, which was one of the amendments that looked at the R3 adjacent to R1. And in my district particularly, we have areas where there are some alleys and then there's no alleys and contiguous, and I think this clarifies that. To protect does not mean that on SB 1818 projects, that they will not come forward and be able to get potentially that height, but it will be ensuring that we're addressing some of the issues. It'll be off-menu. And I just want to stand up because I have not had a chance since yesterday, I talked a little bit about where I'm coming from in my district particularly, as well as citywide. Two things. One is, I feel very strongly that we need to create more affordable housing in the city of Los Angeles, that the reason we have a lot of the traffic today is because there's not affordable housing near where people work and the ability to do so, and which is why the transit corridors and the metro stops particularly, we thought was an area in which we could address some of that as well. Protecting the neighborhoods, when people move into some of these neighborhoods and they look at, they're a block away from Moore Park or Burbank or Magnolia, which are some of the major streets in my district where it's been impacted, they anticipate if they live next to an R3 zone, that some instances, it's only been a two-story duplex, and now they can go to 45 feet currently in the existing zone. And if you drive some of those, down some of those streets, it has become kind of a wall. Most of those, almost all of those, are not affordable housing. One that we had on Moore Park came in, it's now 52 units, and three of those units are affordable, but the height was able to go up to that 56. But the important part of that project is we worked with the developer to be able to actually make sure that there was some of those protections adjacent to that R1, that we had visitor parking, because in this area, it's extremely crowded on the streets, every single parking space on the street is taken, and the ability to look at some of the shadowing and other issues. And so SB 1818 and the implementation, we think is important to address the issue of adjacent to a budding, and I think the language here says, changing the word to contiguous to read, sharing a common lot line with or across an alley from. That changes that to protect those individuals. Additionally, the protections that were put in there before, which is the 50-foot, the fact that they have to be able to, and we have a good, Mr. Cahen delivered to us a drawing, which I want to point out to everyone what it would look like from those locations next to and on our one zone. But I think this will help clarify and to be able to provide that protection, as well as, did you want to comment on this? Is that why the city attorney is coming to the table?
Yes, City Attorney, I just...
Because I think we did this in conjunction with you, all the language.
Well, we all work together. I just wanted to point out, I think...
Yes, hold my time, sorry.
There's, rather than just taking the word contiguous out, you have to take the word "to" out after contiguous, and you might want to take the words "that is" out after. I think it reads better.
Okay.
So it doesn't change the sentence.
I will accept that as a friendly amendment to that.
Thank you.
I think that means right. Okay. So bottom line is, what we have, and the discussions I have to tell you, have been very good in the last, not only three years that people have been working on this, but even in the last couple of weeks, to fine-tune and to be able to address some of the concerns that have been raised to us. And so this item that you have before you would ask for an I-vote, it amends the amendment I introduced last week. So thank you very much, Ms. Perry.
Any other council members wishing to speak? There's nobody, Mr. Parks, yes.
Madam President, I'd just like to ask a couple of clarifying questions, then I'll go into the motion. One of the things that we've gotten some calls about, and just for clarity for the public, is that on areas such as Crenshaw Specific Plan, it has a four-story maximum. And we need to clarify to the public that this law preempts the specific plan as it relates to density, so that there was misinformation, people didn't understand whether it was the specific plan, the community plan, or this legislation is basically an authority on density and height.
That is correct. The ordinance will preempt the, any zoning, you know, the latest applicable zoning, including a queue condition or a specific plan and limitations. That is correct.
And then, let me ask also, as far as the menu, on and off-menu, particularly on height, is that driven by the state law, or is that driven by the policy within the city?
This is our own policy.
That's the policy as far as what's on-menu, what's not on-menu?
Correct.
Okay. Now, could we be in a situation if we went on-menu or took something off that's currently recommended for on-menu, such as height, and move it to off-menu, does that conflict with the law at all?
City Attorney here, Kent Far. No, Councilman, it does not. Developers can ask for anything off-menu that they want to. So what the menu is, it's just a select list of concessions that are more readily available, but anything...
I understand that. What's the question specifically asked of me was, if you are on-menu, it appears that it's almost by right, you come in and you ask for them. If you are off-menu, it goes through some type of... you are off-menu, it goes through some type of hearing. And so particularly with height, if it's not on-menu and you have to go through a hearing, is what my constituents are asking about. Because if you go over four stories on Crenshaw, if it's on-menu, you can go to five without a hearing. It's by right. So I'm asking, is that, in dealing with that on or off-menu, being that that's a policy decision, does that conflict with the law at all as to what density is being given to a developer?
No, it does not. The state law does not set forth the procedures to implement the state law. And so that's what this ordinance is. It's setting forth the procedures. So it doesn't require that we have a hearing, but in most instances.
If it's on-menu, it doesn't require?
Yes.
Okay. If it's off-menu, it does?
Yes.
Okay. But that was a policy decision, not driven by the state law?
That's right. Correct.
Let me just go through, my motion primarily deals with Page Three, Number Two, that deals with the issue of using a flexible description of a bus, rapid line, or a rapid-line bus stop as a zoning criteria. And what I'm going to move forward on my motion is that we ask that planning, basically create what can be considered acceptable language. It appears that many people on the council agree that using that flexible boundary may not be the best way that we zone, but we couldn't agree on language that would replace that. And when we got into such things as highways and secondary streets and things, it may be conflicted with different communities. I know Ms. Grule has asked for now, a couple of years, for a definition of a, basically a transportation corridor, and we haven't quite pulled that off. But the issue is, we need language, and I'm asking that that language be developed by planning through the Plumb Committee, and hopefully that we can get it back before this ordinance goes into effect, so that we can have more definitive boundaries or directions or clarifications, other than a route of a bus that may get altered if MTA runs out of funds or has a change as relates to the type of service in which a rapid bus could be moved, a bus stop could be moved, or we could end up with a rapid bus being moved to another location. So rather than using that kind of flexible guideline, we're asking for a more stationary definition or something that can be agreed upon, as opposed to that issue of Item Two on Page Three.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. And Mr. Reyes, I believe you have a third amendment. Mr. Reyes, you have an amendment. Did you wish to speak to your amendment? And then we'll go back to those who are on the queue.
Yes, thank you, Council President. My amendment essentially is trying to look at how we can create some flexibility while addressing these issues that are coming up regarding impacts. And, because just hold my time, I wanted to ask, I saw this earlier, and I want to just present that image of what this means physically, and might put us at ease if we can actually see these spatial relationships. When we talk 50 feet, 45 feet, the other day, one of our council colleagues was pointing to pillars and saying, this is 50 feet, and this was going to happen. And then we start making decisions based on that type of explanation. But I'm hoping this helps, because it speaks to the physics of this and the space. What you find there is a single-family resident. The frontage is essentially, if you can just point to the front of that home.
The street is here.
That's the street. That's the home. Then you go back, how many, how long is that?
The site's 150 feet, and the backyard's 40 feet.
So you have a 40-foot backyard, and it's abutting, it's adjacent, up against an R3 zone. Now, where's the property line separating R3 and R1?
Right here.
That's the property line. So if you take that person, and I don't think it's a midget, I think it's a person that's average size, or a person, I mean, because we want you to play with the perspectives here. That's an average-sized person looking up towards the edge of that building. And that's what you find, and what number of stories are those?
It's a four-story, 45-foot-high building.
Right. So if you get the density bonus of one story, and it's designed properly, you would not put it where you're going to create more shadow and shade for the neighboring property. So your sideline, in effect, would not see that additional story. And so can you point where the sidelines go?
The sightline to the 45 feet is the solid line. The dotted line is obstructed by the 45 feet. So you cannot see the fifth floor.
Right. Now, we did not include an alleyway. We did not include an alleyway, and we did not include the 50 feet that this ordinance is allowing. And so the notion of a buffer is very real, because this is giving you the worst-case scenario, the actual single-family residential zone with an R3 right next to it. Now, many of the older neighborhoods, you're going to find this more often. So the 50 feet makes a big difference. In the newer neighborhoods, you're very fortunate, because you were planned out in the 40s and 50s, where they created these buffers that are great. Wider alleys, usually wider yard setbacks. And so this becomes even less punitive when folks say you're going to encroach or create these kinds of conditions. So I just want to put that in certain perspective. And quite frankly, I wish I could put together a whole slide presentation to talk about all of these kinds of conditions, so that we can absorb what we're really doing. Sometimes we hear folks frantically fighting something and not understanding the legalities and these proportions in real-life settings. So I want to thank you for presenting this, because I think it gives us a perspective. I'm trying my best to figure out how we can actually do what we say we want to do, which is create relief for this great city and provide housing. I know this is not a one-size-fits-all, and so I thank my colleagues for their patience, because I know all of the tensions they're going through. I understand the issue of the stakeholders and how they're very passionate about their position. But the fact is, everything from global warming to congestion, to losing family time, to juvenile delinquency, is, can be attributed to the fact that we don't have a home or a place to be where we can have more family time. So it gets to the core of a lot of issues. The amendment that I was putting forth was trying to create a level of comfort so that we do not lose the opportunity of dealing with affordable dynamic while staying committed to and adhering to the state law. So the motion is as follows. This prohibition shall not apply if a housing development project has a minimum of 20% restricted affordable units. If the lot on which the housing development project is located is within 1,500 feet of a transit stop, but no additional height shall be permitted for that portion of a building in the housing development project that is located within 50 feet of a lot classified in R1 or more restricted residential zone. So it's not only this, but you're adding 50 feet, which creates a wider break and more relief for the R1, because I want to protect the R1 zones. I probably have the largest historic overlay zones. I have the first one in Angeles Heights, the biggest one in Highland Park, and probably more of them. So I understand the value and the need to protect R1 zones. It's something that I practice, but I'm trying to find a way to get us to a place where we can accept this ordinance. So that being said, thank you. Can I get a second on this motion?
Second from Mr. Garcetti. We're calling the question, Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. You know, and again, I appreciate all the work that's been done and some of these added amendments that are seeming to make this a little bit workable for particular neighborhoods in these districts. But I share a lot of what Councilmember Parks was talking about, which I brought up last time, kind of this on-menu, off-menu process. And again, you know, I've heard overwhelmingly from people in neighborhoods who, again, have worked so hard and so long to come up with specific plans and community plans. Again, neighborhood councils are now becoming very educated in planning 101, and this just seems to be putting something in the place which short-circuits the public's ability, the neighbor's ability to really be involved in a hearing, give their input, you know, look the developer in the eye, and complain about. I'm particularly concerned about the on-menu, open space, height, again. And for only 20% affordable housing in this density bonus, you know, we're giving up a lot of, you know, I think we're giving away a lot. I particularly don't like the open space. I think to say that open space can be mitigated by landscaping on the project is just something that goes against everything I think we've been trying to do and preserve in the city of Los Angeles. So maybe you can explain to me why open space is on-menu. And I, yeah, and I get this, that developers come in here and ask for this stuff all the time. I get that. But why are we making it that much easier on certain areas that we know will really frustrate neighborhoods and frustrate community members who've worked hard to preserve some of these things? Why can't open space, for instance, be off-menu, so that at least it triggers a public hearing? I think I'm concerned that for all these items, they don't trigger a public hearing anymore. And that, yes, I know they have the right to do this. Yes, I know that this is something they've asked for and we've given to them. But again, it's always been with the inclusion of the neighborhood and particularly the property owners around a particular project.
Helen Vivas Planning, this is modeled on the existing discretion of the zoning administrator and even building and safety to grant up to 20% reduction in any one of those items. So this is not any different from a non-density bonus project. Today, if you have a by-right project that does not include density bonus, or doesn't take advantage of those regulations, you can ask a 20% reduction in open space, floor area issue, and so forth, without having to do a public hearing. So this is not very different from what exists today in the zoning code.
So there's nothing today that triggers a public hearing when they make the ask?
For up to 20%. This is considered quite minor as a deviation that either the building and safety engineers can grant or planning.
What if it was above 20%?
I beg your pardon? If it is above 20%, then yes, that triggers, you know, a public hearing and off-menu. It's considered an off-menu item.
Okay. I still have a lot of issues with this, the way we're implementing this. I understand the state law. I understand it's up to us to figure out how to implement it. But I've heard way too many concerns about this to feel comfortable with this at this point.
Of the six-year-old cases that we have processed in the department in the last two, three years, actually, none of them used the open space reduction incentives. They all used mostly height or yard deviations. This is not a very popular, you know.
Then why do we have that on?
It's not one that's, because in some instances, it can create problems. Sometimes it's not really open space. It could be a recreation room, this kind of thing.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl.
Yeah, you know, it's so difficult for me to deal with, to be candid with you. And I want to bring up again Louise Street, and if the camera can do it similar to what they did at the front thing from up there. This is a street in my district. And if you look at the structure under 1818, it's 45 feet high, and right next door is a house that's 11 feet high. So it's just an assault on character and scale of my neighborhood. They have less parking for the units, and then therefore my neighbors all up and down the street have more of an impact on their street for the parking. We have put in a couple of motions that I'm big on. One is the one that Wendy put in, and I second, which is the one that, to change the word contiguous to read, sharing a common lot line with or across an alley from. I like that, because that gives us more protection. But I know there's a lot of feeling that if we don't do it, they're just going to shove more stuff down our throat. And that 20% is better than nothing. And that's the line I hear. And I also hear that Santa Monica has been affected with 20%. Well, Santa Monica doesn't create enough housing. I mean, believe me, they have created the gridlock in my district with all their businesses, and we thank them very much for that. So they're not much of a model as to where we need to go. My problem is, my district is location, location, location. And all a developer wants to do is come in and build more, because there's a bigger profit they can make. It's a big problem for me. If a developer were to say, Rosendahl, I'll go 100% affordable, even if they would say 50% affordable, I will do whatever I can do with my community and with zoning and variances to make it happen. But to me, in my district, it's just another assault on the folks and doesn't give me enough affordable housing. The problem I have is my colleague to my right, Ed Reyes, who's desperately in need of affordable housing and all kinds of housing. If the developers were to go to those districts and really work on it, rather than just coming to the Ocean District all the time to make their buck, kick out my people through an Ellis Act strategy like they did at Lincoln Place, and continue to make high-end condos and nice margins of profit, my district has had enough of that kind of development. That's why I'm working with the LAUSD right now, with the hope that we can build with the LAUSD affordable housing on their property for teachers and firefighters. So if we're able to do something that is more substantial for affordable housing, it gets my full and enthusiastic support. At this point, even though I'm an affordable housing advocate, I can't vote for it. People will say, well, Rosendahl, you voted for it last week. Well, it was my ignorance of the law. I can go for amending and putting amendments in, but it means I can still also vote against it. And whatever is forced through the process would at least have those amendments. So I need more before I'm able to go with it. And at this point, I'm for these amendments that make it better, but it doesn't give me what I feel I need. Now, can you respond to that? Am I wrong in what I'm saying about what it really does or doesn't do? Especially when I look at this Louise Street project in my district, those neighbors came banging on my door. It took away parking by this place going up. It puts shadow and destroys the character and scale of the neighborhood. What is your general feeling about 1818 in that context?
Deputy City Attorney Ken Fong here. I understand what the councilman is saying. And throughout the state, cities have complained about this legislation. But, you know, I have to remind you that it is state legislation. So if you do not approve the implementing ordinance, the state law will stay in effect. The city will have to comply with it. And the city will have to comply with the existing density bonus ordinance that it has on the books. And the reason why planning is bringing this to you is so that the city's codes can be made consistent with the state law, and so that there are procedures and there are no inconsistencies. Otherwise, you still have to comply with the state law. You still have to give these density bonuses.
Is there any city that has done it from a perspective that appreciates the need for more affordable housing? Has Pasadena done it? Has Berkeley done it? Has anybody done it? San Francisco? That gives me more hope that it can be modified to a degree that actually creates affordable housing, rather than just more high-end stuff and more density in my district?
Well, I just, you know, I haven't, I haven't called all these cities. I can share with you that I did call the city of Burbank just yesterday, because I wanted to inquire about what they had done. They're a fairly large city. They're not as large as our city. Last year, or a year ago, they adopted their own version of the, of an implementing ordinance. They pretty much track the state law. And the staff person I was speaking to, he shared with me that they had had no applications for density bonuses within the last year. So I think their experience may be different from ours, because we're such a large city. We're going to have, in actual numbers, much more than other cities.
What about Pasadena?
I don't recall. Do you recall if Pasadena has passed? I'm just aware that a lot of...
I'm wondering, if we continue this item, could by the next meeting have more information on if any other cities did some more creative strategies that did put more affordable housing in it? Because right now, I got to tell you, I was at a homeowners' group last night, and they asked me to asked me to have a complete moratorium on any development in our district. Because our folks can't even go out and get a quart of milk half the day because of the incredible incentive job opportunities that Santa Monica created that create 300,000 more car trips in my district every day. We're absolutely in gridlock for half the day. And until we get our mass transit systems in place, it's not going to get any better. But I'm for affordable housing. I'll say to any developer, that's why I want to keep my fire station 62 so that I can provide the land and the developer can provide the affordable housing, and we get a win-win. I want to build affordable housing for my seniors. I want to build it for veterans and others. And I can't even do that because the land is so outpriced, except for city land, which I will never sell, an asset of that value. We'll never get it back. I want to create affordable housing. But in discussions with affordable housing advocates, and I spoke to a couple sitting here right now, they say this is the only way we can build affordable housing. Help me with that one.
Mr. Rosendahl, after you're done with this round--
Oh, I'm sorry.
Press your button again, because you're over time.
Okay, thank you.
Let him answer your question and then press your button again.
Thank you.
All right. I'll attempt to answer that. Let me just ask for some clarification. You mentioned earlier if there was a way to require more affordable housing. Under the state law, that wouldn't be possible because the state law sets forth specific set-asides of affordable housing. They're set forth actually in the state law. And when developers do that, they are entitled to a specified density bonus. We would not be able to change those numbers if that's part of what you're asking.
And what I'm in part is asking that. That's why people voted yes for 93, to throw them out. Because the opportunity, if Sacramento provides real leadership, is not an 1818. It's something that does create affordable housing, not just another opportunity for developers to assault my district. I mean, that's my problem with that. Can we do anything about that?
Well, I understand your concern. As far as the state density bonus law, I don't think so unless you can get the state legislature to amend that law such that this city and other cities do not have to comply with it. But as far as the state density bonus law, it is here, and we have to comply with it.
Okay. Well, thank you for letting me finish that question, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Labange is our next speaker.
Thank you very much. I believe the League of Cities' position is what?
Councilman, when SB 1818 was going before the state legislature, the League of Cities had lobbyists there. And they were asking that certain amendments be made to soften its impact. My understanding, just from reading a report on this yesterday, was that those amendments were not successful. And I think in general, most cities probably would have been opposed to this, but it passed anyway.
Okay, I got it. So the League of Cities is opposed to it, which is important. Community associations in Los Angeles have weighed in, or some have. Activist groups, very important to build houses, have weighed in. There's a difference of opinion. The one thing that really remarks me, Mr. President, is the words of Ms. Hahn moments ago about the lack of involvement on a buy-right now on this issue here, where there will be a transformation of a neighborhood. I believe people should be involved in what the change is. One of my nightmares in the district is, is there was a planning matter where it said they could build 40 units behind the old blockbuster on Hyperion and Griffith Park. If you look at a map on the sixth floor, maybe it makes sense. But you go out to Hyperion and Griffith Park, it doesn't make sense as it blends in with the rest of the neighborhood. I don't like the buy-right issue at all. I also don't believe this is going to solve our problem. And our problem is a challenge that we have to look at other cities. And there were other representatives of the planning department here. I asked direct questions about other cities. And I'm just a little shocked that we have no knowledge about the other 87 cities in the county and what they're doing. We should see what the other cities are doing and try to match that.
Did you guys answer? You should have responded to that rather than--
You want to answer anything to that?
Well, I was involved in that project only for one year. So all this background information was addressed, you know--
Let me ask you a question. Where are you, just a technical question and not about you personally, but let's say you're the community planner for the San Fernando Valley, right? Is there a community planner for the San Fernando Valley?
For community plan areas, yes.
Yeah. Do you think they know the community planner of San Fernando well? Do you think they know the community planner of Calabasas and Burbank and Glendale and maybe Pasadena? I don't know. We should have this relationship. Does the community planner of San Pedro know the community planner of Lomita in Long Beach? You know, and to see what it is. Because all of a sudden, it becomes a burden for the region that we represent. I'm proud of all 4 million-plus people in this city. And we hit 4 million last year. But I think we have to balance it out. We have to balance it out. Where density, on top of train stations, on top of very big bus systems, that makes sense for me, on top of subway systems. But not on just rapid lines coming down Los Feliz Boulevard or Ventura Boulevard and in some parts. So I can't stand to support it. I'm interested in some of these amendments, but I can't stand to support it because I also don't think we've done enough research with the other cities. And why do we have to close our eyes to other cities? And Los Angeles is a very, with other municipalities, there's 27 cities around our borders. 27 cities. We should consult with them. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm over 15 seconds. I owe you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much. And thank you, colleagues, for the amendments as well. I think obviously we know that this will go to a second reading, which will give the chance also to digest a lot of what's been happening. I wanted to address a couple things and underscore the importance of this. We're not going to save a single building from getting demolished by not implementing 1818. So I want to underscore again, no matter what happens with this, the importance, and we're certainly hearing this from our friends and the communities, the neighborhood associations, neighborhood councils, also from our affordable housing preservationists, that we've got to do something about those demolitions. What this does is if something does get demolished, it inserts some affordable units in what gets built. If we don't pass 1818, zero units get built that are affordable in what replaces or gets demolished. And I want to say that again because I think we're mixing apples and oranges sometimes. There's no prohibition from people knocking down rent-stabilized apartments right now and building something new. The current law, they don't have to do anything affordable. This law adds at least some affordable units, which is not going to solve the housing crisis, but for those 10 families or whoever, those are 10 more Angelenos who don't have to contribute to traffic, who can live in a neighborhood, et cetera. That's point number one. Number two, I appreciate the picture that Mr. Rosendahl, that you showed us. That picture that right now, there's no protection next to an R1 zone for building something like that. The way we have written this now would be a protection if we implement. If we fail to implement, there's no protection. Implementing with that exact picture actually protects that home right next to it from that monstrosity not happening again. And that's also an important clarification because when we keep saying 1818 is going to make more of these, this is happening without the 1818 today. Neighborhoods need to know that. Communities need to know that. And precisely because we're as appalled in our own neighborhoods with things like that happening, we changed the law that was drafted by the planning department to prohibit that. So I don't want us to say that 1818 is going to produce that. It's different. And it actually helps what you have said that you want, and I know that we want as well. Where housing is being built, I appreciate that the West Side, there's a lot of interest in doing that there, and there's a lot of profit. If you look at the numbers of units, and I think Mr. Reyes has the statistics and has done some of this in his committee, the most housing is being done in various places in the city. We're seeing in CD 9, the most housing anywhere in the city. That's the poorest district in Los Angeles. So it's not just in wealthy areas. In fact, it's happening in the poorest district. It's happening in CD 2, which is the second poorest district. It's happening in CD 13, which is the third poorest district. It's not so much whether we build housing, it's what sort of housing we build and what do our communities look like. West LA, as you mentioned, Santa Monica is now added retail and commercial and all these other things. West LA has added jobs, but built zero housing. That's why, my parents who live in West Los Angeles, my mom won't leave the house except from 10 to 2. She can walk from her house to the 405 freeway more quickly than you can drive, and it's probably about three miles. So we can fail to lead as a city and not build any housing and pat ourselves on the back because we feel that it's a Pyrrhic victory. Visually, my neighborhood looks like it hasn't changed. But in the meantime, what's happening? Well, we had an interesting thing in committee today in Mr. Weston's Housing Committee where we had a study from the Economic Roundtable that showed the overpopulation of our housing stock. People don't not have kids. People don't still come to those jobs in Santa Monica and West LA. What they do is they pack into the existing infrastructure. Not one more parking space is built, but there's two families where one family used to be. That means there's twice as many cars as where there was before. And what that means is all the quality of our life in all of our neighborhoods goes down because we failed to lead. We failed to build. We failed to do anything. And in Los Angeles, for three decades, we have had these victories, these sort of Pyrrhic victories where we say, "We kept growth from happening, but why does it keep getting worse? Why are things still bad? Why are we 47th out of 48 big cities in America on affordability? Why is there so much traffic? Why do we have the worst air in America? And when we fail to connect, that it's because we're not adding mixed-income housing together while protecting our neighborhoods? It will continue to get worse." I submit to you, all of you, Ms. Hahn loves neighborhoods. She has an amazing record doing that. Mr. Reyes loves neighborhoods. Mr. Weiss loves neighborhoods. I love neighborhoods. We all want to protect neighborhoods and in fact, looked at this and improved it so that those protections are there. In some cases, as I just pointed out to Mr. Rosendahl, greater protection than currently exists. That's what this law does. But at the same time, we have to do three things. We have to build more housing. We have to protect our neighborhoods. And we have to do it without a subsidy. And the last thing in closing, Mr. Rosendahl, you mentioned you would go for things if there was more substantial on the affordable housing side. We can do that. But the only way we can do that, the way the marketplace works right now, is with more of our money now. If we go to, there's a certain tipping point in the economics of building something where if we, you know, whatever that tipping point is, 30%, 50%, where it just won't pencil out. So what happens then is government can step in and help build that. But what that means is it's, we're billing all of you to do that. We're figuring out in a terrible budget year where we're going to find money that doesn't exist because we're cutting. So you're right, logically, there is one more way to do it, but we can't do that. What is brilliant about doing this right in a way that protects neighborhoods is we do it with zero taxpayer money. Zero money comes out of libraries. Zero money comes out of the police department. Zero money comes out of other places. We do this in a way that strengthens neighborhood protections, but also finally gets us that housing built. And I would appeal to all of us to think that through because inaction today is not only bad on the housing front, inaction is bad on the neighborhood protection front. Inaction means that those monstrosities that you pointed out can continue full steam ahead, full steam ahead, without us doing anything.
And you need to take another action, push your button again, Mr. Garcetti.
I'm done. Thank you.
Ms. Skrul.
I had a question. If you could explain, I think, to our colleagues, and one of the things, as you said, if we don't have an implementing ordinance or this implementing ordinance, it'll continue. We have options on an implementing ordinance, correct?
Yes, you do. And I just wanted to clarify because also Councilman Labange had asked about that--
Hold my time.
--had asked about what other cities had done. From my recollection, most cities have just adopted implementing ordinances that simply repeat the state law. But what the planners in this city have done is they've tried to craft an ordinance that does several different things. One, it complies with the state law. And second, it tries to do it in a way that protects R1 and also has this menu that gives incentives that maybe are a little bit more palatable than in some of the other cities where they just go in and then they ask for whatever they want. And if you have a menu where you're likely to get it and you don't have to go through the other process, many developers will do that. So that's the whole idea behind this city's implementing ordinance.
Could you describe for the council, if an item is on the on-menu--
Yes.
Are there appeals?
There is an appeal to the City Planning Commission, which would hold a hearing.
Okay. So even if you're on-menu?
Yes.
Okay. And then what happens after that? If this--
The City Planning Commission would be the final decision maker.
Final decision maker. If it's off-menu?
Same thing.
What is the hearing process?
It's the CPC is the initial decision maker.
Yes.
Well, you can describe it.
Okay. Yes, again, the Planning Commission is the final decision maker.
On off?
When it's off-menu. When it's coupled with other legislative actions, then the city council will be the final decision maker for tractback, for example.
I'm sorry, for what?
For condominiums, for example.
Okay.
That will come here.
So if I, if it's off-menu and I appeal, and the CPC does not agree with me, is it appealable to the next step to the council?
No. No, the decision is final unless it's too far, unless the council decides to hear it.
Okay. In our language, 245.
That's correct.
Okay. So that, but in the on-menu, there's no option of 245-ing it?
Yes, there is always the option of 245. You can always exert that most--
That's not what we heard.
It's always the preview of the city council to exert, you know, to use the 245. It's not automatic. You will have to request--
But we heard no last time. I think Ms. Hahn is saying--
That's what she said. It can be, it's only--
Do you know, Ed? Do you know? The question was whether or not if it's on-menu, it is appealable to the council, 245? Because I think what they said the other day, that only if it's off-menu is it, and on-menu not.
I'm not sure, to be honest with you, because we've been shifting this so much. We're trying to address everyone's nuances.
30? 13. Page 13?
Page 13, City Attorney here. The appellate decision of the City Planning Commission shall be final and effective as provided in Charter Section 245, which means that it can be taken up to the city council under 245.
But you're not appealing a commission. It's bureaucrats that's saying yes. Sorry.
What she's saying is if the decision is made by the department on an on-menu, it's not a commission decision. So therefore, it's not appealable.
No, it is appealable to the City Planning Commission.
Well, anything is a commission decision that goes in front of the City Planning Commission. They have to hold a hearing on an appeal. So they would have held a hearing. If it is appealed to the City Planning Commission, they would have held a public hearing on it and rendered a decision. At that point, the city council, if it wishes, could 245 it.
At that point in time. So I think that, you know, Mr. Parks brought up an issue which there's some confusion before on the specific plan because I'm a representative that has several specific plans and that the SB 1818 supersedes those specific plans. Is that correct?
Yes. The state density bonus law, which SB 1818 amends, supersedes any local zoning or planning regulations, which would include specific plans and our zoning ordinance.
And so, colleagues, what we're trying to figure out is how we create incentives for affordable housing in the city of Los Angeles, which I think all of us in this room think is a noble cause and something we need to work on and fix in the city of Los Angeles. There is never going to be enough funding. The private sector has to come in and do some of that. And what we're trying to do is find that balance between what is by right and what has some hearing, both in which would create affordable housing. And trying to, as Mr. Garcetti mentioned, you know, trying to figure out where we change that. And as Mr. Reyes and I've talked about, you know, that was the whole idea behind community plans. It was the whole idea of what may be important to Ventura Boulevard or Moore Park is very different than is on Wilshire Boulevard or Crenshaw Boulevard. And trying to make one size fits all is a very difficult thing. And so I think all of us are standing here not in opposition to one another or the overall cause of creating that affordable housing. It's just trying to figure out how it is implemented in certain communities where they've tried to put protections in to balance, particularly when they are adjacent to that R1, and to address that. So I think that from all of us, and because Mr. Reyes has worked very hard on this, that So I think that from all of us, and because Mr. Reyes has worked very hard on this, that all of us are coming from that perspective, which is trying to create density where it is important and necessary and create opportunities for hearings. Because I think one thing is that we've had projects in my district, which I mentioned earlier, which were SB 1818, which people were unhappy about, still went to 56 feet, but we were able to have some ability to deal with common issues and concerns in those areas, but it's still, they were still able to get to that 56 feet. And I think one of the items that Mr. Reyes's, whatever happens today, is to look at for those projects that may fit in that category I've talked about, which is next to, adjacent to R1, a process whereby the Planning Department, because it was also, potentially also close to being on-menu, that it's, it's not this elongated, because again, for some of the, for some of the people who want to build this housing, an elongated process makes it actually impossible to ever do. And that is not the intent from this council person for that to occur. And so I think as we look at implementation of this, I would be, you know, really like to work with you, Mr. Reyes, to see how we do that, that allows for public input, but also doesn't make it a year process to do that. So thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Grul. Mr. Reyes, for a second time.
Thank you, Congressman. Colleagues, what I laid out at each one of your desks is a map that speaks to the poverty conditions of the city, the respective districts. And I only share this with you with the intent of trying to stimulate this, this logic that speaks to how we create policy for actually creating jobs, believe it or not. Many of the areas in which you see that are in orange and brown are areas where we have high levels of unemployment. We learned this morning that we have high populations that, as was articulated by Councilman Garcetti, two, three families living in one household. Imagine if we could start building up the infrastructure where housing can occur in those sensitive areas, where the neighborhood councils can work on these projects on a case-by-case basis, but allows us to adhere to the state law. Now, the fact is, that law is already in place and it's already being implemented, as was said before. But I'm asking you to consider as policymakers, to consider this map, consider the poverty pockets in respective districts in CD 15, you can see emerging CD 7, CD 12 even, you've got some pockets of poverty, and it's growing. If I were to show you this in 1990, half of what you see in the valley wouldn't be there. It's there today. So because we are introducing community plans, because we have geared up the Planning Department and thanks to budget and finance increase, the personnel there, there is a much more refined approach in dealing with these issues. And that is what we're geared up to do. So I'm hoping that at the end of this dialogue, you can see that two years of work is about identifying these opportunities. Two years of work is about promoting processes for the neighborhood council, the council office, procedures that will allow us to create a better product because the procedures are there. Two years of work has allowed us to get there. So I welcome your questions, but I'm hoping in the long run, this is the picture that we have in front of us. Not just one district or one neighborhood, but the whole city, because that's where we're at today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Labonge, for a second time.
Thank you very much. You know, I have a report here from the city of Burbank and the city of Santa Monica. I do believe it's important to look at other municipalities. Mr. Rosendahl, when he spoke earlier about the transportation plan, talked about Santa Monica, what Santa Monica does and the impacts on Los Angeles. I think it's wrong for us to go forward at this time without analyzing this. I would welcome if the Planning Department would analyze this, take 60 days, look at all the cities. Call a meeting of your other planning directors and see what we're doing and see what we're balancing on. I could see it, I want to have success for people. I want to see the right housing built. I don't know if densification is the right area. Part of my district is the, is the shared, most densely populated part of Los Angeles. Second, only to Manhattan in the nation, is the Wilshire corridor between downtown and Western Avenue, between Beverly and Pico, and some parts of that is in the 4th District. So Mr. Reyes and Mr. Garcetti, I appreciate your passion, but I would like to ask the Planning Department, and when Ms. Blumenfeld was here last week, I specifically asked about other cities, and she never gave me an answer and kind of floated it around. And here, you're the professional, you're the one we count on. I'm here for a short period of time, you're here for 30 years. So I would ask that you would take 60 days and study these other cities. What are they doing? Meet with the planning director of Glendale, Burbank, and Pasadena, South Pasadena, Southgate, La Mita, Long Beach, San Fernando, Calabasas, Beverly Hills, West Hollywood, Santa Monica, Torrance, Underincorporated County, Hawthorne, anything that touches the city of Los Angeles, and see how could we comply together on this? How we could do the right thing? Because I don't want to do the wrong thing. I've seen wrong buildings be created due to the wrong zoning or the wrong care.
Yes, Councilman, can I, can I just respond briefly to that? Deputy City Attorney Ken Fong here. I worked with Sharon Mayer, who was of the Planning Department. She had done the initial work on this ordinance and since has retired. It's taken so long to do this. And I did not talk to the other cities, being in the City Attorney's Office, but I do recall that at that time, she had talked to other cities and she had studied other ordinances at that time.
How long has she been retired?
She's, I think it's a year.
A year, so that doesn't count. And I know Sharon, she's a good person, she's got a great husband, he's an architect. Here's the thing, what we got to do.
Okay, I just wanted to share that with you.
We got to take, I understand that, but we should have a chart. We should have a chart. If we're making a decision that makes an impact for many years, I think our city attorney would give us advice that we should study what the other cities are doing and then make the right thing. And also, on the appeal process, only three people could appeal. You know, three people could appeal, abutting to that. I'm about process. And where I got hurt in, in my representation is what people didn't even know that they could have this here. They got to know. And I also believe in cities should have rights. Even though states pass laws, we have to balance that out, but doesn't mean the state is right. I thank you, I ask for a 60-day continuance and allow an analyst of other cities that are surrounding Los Angeles, so we could balance out and do the right thing for Los Angeles. Thank you.
Is that a motion?
Is there a second?
Second by Ms. Han.
Who seconded the motion? I couldn't hear. All right, seconded by Ms. Han. Mr. Rosendahl, for the second time?
I like that motion, Tom, and I think it's a good thing to get a better understanding of what our options are. And frankly, in an ideal world, what I'd really like to do is now that we have Prop. 93 up there in Sacramento, is make a major effort to modify the legislation and see if we can come up with a piece of legislation that complements our communities and isn't something that's just shoved down our throat. I have a mixed set of feelings. I have a little bit of guilt and a little bit of everything, because when Mr. Garcetti spoke with his passion, and absolutely I agree with him that affordable housing is a must and we're in a crisis situation in this city and we're not building affordable housing. I also agree with him that if we just let 1818 continue the way it is, the assault is even more brutal. Like I was discussing with my Louise project, where, you know, they're, they're not going to have enough parking, so they're going to inundate the single-family people, the height is destroying the neighbors. So there's compelling reasons for Mr. Garcetti to take the position he has, but at this point in the process, I cannot buy into it until I get a better understanding of other cities, have a continuing of the discussion, and see if we can even look at Sacramento through the League of Cities and other strategies to see if we can change the law. You know, Sacramento isn't God. They're the ones who took the billion and a half away to balance their budget last year that was supposed to have been for transportation. I mean, you know, just because Sacramento says, why do we have to follow it? Now, of course, we have three former state legislators here, and I certainly want to get their awareness and appreciation of it. But in my district, once again, it's not going to create more affordable housing, at least not enough to meet my needs, and the gridlock is over the top as it is, and it's just more density into my community. So I want to continue it if we can support Mr. Labonge's motion, but if we can't, I appreciate various amendments that we've all agreed on, but I will vote no if we're going to have to be forced to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, this is time for the individuals who are here and have filled out speaker cards. And I did announce yesterday that this would be the close of a public hearing, but since we have the amendments that are substantive, City Attorney has recommended that we allow opportunity for all sides. Five minutes each for both sides, five minutes for, five minutes against, and then five minutes for general. So I'll just call the cards up and make your comments concise, please. First, Speaker against the proposal will be Judy, let me call them all out. Judy Price, Lisa Sarkin, Mark Ambrose.
What kind of a deal?
Paul, let me see. That would be, I think that's it for the opposition. So if you can come on up.
Hi. I'm Judy Price, I'm president of the Greater Valley Glen Council. First, I want to say, we've been dealing with this issue since 2005. And I also want to add, leadership is also about doing the right thing. And I think we are, even after three years rushing to judgment, it's very important that you get it right. To say that this is going, not going further than SB 1818 is incorrect. Many of us have studied the law. This is the law. It's something that we know about, we've testified before, year after year after year. We do not have to ruin neighborhoods to have affordable housing. Density bonus is already in place. In fact, in Valley Glen right now, there's one that's been applied for on WITZIT. And I heard yesterday in testimony that there weren't enough, that it was a matter that we should be concerned with. It is a matter we should be concerned with. Again, we support Zev's letter in terms of the recommendations, and we urge you not to take a vote today if you are going to vote for it.
Next speaker, please.
Lisa Sarkin, Studio City Neighborhood Council, I'm the chair of the Land Use Committee. I'd like to put something straight here that I don't think anybody ever discusses, and that is that we're constantly discussing that the police and teachers and firemen would be able to move into these affordable units. Well, they may be able to, but not if they're married to anyone, they would make too much money. I think that each district ought to be able to have their own input on what is on or off the menu for each district. Why couldn't we do something like that? I don't know if anybody else is doing it, I don't see in the law that, that that could not be possible. I think I know what the law says. I think that the map that was brought up here was ridiculous. 150 feet, show me how many houses have 150-foot depth in their houses. We have an affordable building that I told you about yesterday, 37 units were knocked down. 56 were, 52 are allowed to be put up there. It's a 56, 56-height building that is right up next to people's homes. I don't think that that little bit, that it's going to be backed up, is going to help much.
That is, Mark Ambrose is the last speaker against the proposal.
I'm Mark Ambrose, I live in the neighborhood of that Louise project. I'm not against affordable housing and SB 1818, you can make a better ordinance. I'd like to see the protection of maybe the 50 feet increased to 100 feet of within R1 and R2 houses. I've got another idea. I don't think you should allow demolition permits until you get into, the owner gets an approved building permit for what he's going to do. For instance, on Louise, we lost seven affordable units, he's going to build 25, and only two of those units will be affordable. I'd like to see some guarantees that the low-income affordable units go to people on a list who've been on a waiting list to go get these units. I'd like to see the affordable units stay that way forever, not just however many years. I want to see the units in the same building. I don't want any trade-offs where a builder can trade off those units for someplace, other building that he owns in a low-income neighborhood that goes counter to what we're talking about.
Thank you, Mr. Ambrose.
Thank you.
All right, now, in favor of the proposal, and again, five minutes on each side, and I suggest you take, make it concise as possible. Lee Millman, Mike Alvarez, Paul Zimmerman, Lisa Luboff.
Please move on. Thank you, Councilwoman Perry. Mike Alvarez, Skidra Housing Trust, I think the ordinance before you today and the amendments strike a reasonable balance to create more affordable housing and protect the existing neighborhoods that we have today. It's, I don't think we're going to get perfection, I think this is a reasonable balance, and I hope you will approve the ordinance in, at today's, with today's vote. Thank you.
Paul Zimmerman, Southern California Association of Nonprofit Housing. And I really just, I think, want to echo my colleague's remarks in that we really understand that you're struggling to hit the right balance between preserving neighborhoods and rewarding affordable housing. I think that the package of the Grul, Councilmember Grul's amendment and Councilmember Reyes' amendment do that, they continue the balance that we have in the existing ordinance. So we would urge you to pass it. We've been talking about this for more than two years, but that if, if further shaping is done, that it not be done at the expense of incentivizing affordable unit production, that we, that we keep the balance that we've able to work out today. Thank you very much.
Next speaker? Is that it? All right, now, finally, final group is the General Comment Group. Veronica Perez Becker, Vanessa Rodriguez, Daniel Greitzman, Dave, can't read his writing, but it looks like Rome, Barbara Moynihan Burke. Why don't you proceed?
Veronica Perez Becker here on behalf of CCA, the LA Chamber, VICA, and BIA. For the past few years, we've been sitting in the gallery, listening to this council espouse the need for affordable housing. We finally have a mechanism on the table that will help create that housing. SB 1818 will create housing for the working men and women of this city, like our police, firefighters, and teachers. The great work already done by this council and staff ensures that single-family neighborhoods are protected. Yet, we find ourselves fighting to preserve the integrity of the draft ordinance that the city and a broad coalition of stakeholders created over a three-year collaborative city process. Councilmembers, as we have seen over the last few years, opportunities like this do not come along very often. Please adopt something today that is in line with the vision that you all have consistently espoused. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Vanessa Rodriguez, from the chamber, I believe.
They all had a base.
All right, so they've departed. The next speaker after that was, Madam Clerk, maybe you can hand the cards back to me. All right, thank you. All right, so Vanessa Rodriguez has departed. Daniel Greitzman, LA Chamber, gone. Dave Rome, Valley Industry and Commerce Association, or VICA, gone, okay. Barbara Moynihan Burke.
Honorable City Council, I'm Barbara Moynihan Burke from the Studio City Neighborhood Council and Vice President. We are very concerned in Studio City about how this proposed implementing ordinance could go through. We agree with Tom Labonge that we should have a 60-day period to do further research to do with what has done and been done in other places. I say not only in California, but across the nation at the beginning of this process a couple of years ago. We proposed from our neighborhood to the City Planning Department and to the Plumb Committee, many proposals that could work from other areas, and none of them really have gone forth here. So we would like to be heard. Also, you shouldn't have any on-menu, because that puts the process of having the community input, and even the City Council input, not, not able to be there. The way this ordinance is wanting to be implemented, even the City Council, never has any say in any of this. So I really support Wendy Grul and what she did to do with, as part of this implementing ordinance, to do adjacent neighborhoods across the alley rather than only contiguous ones. And I want you to know that we have through this process, come and today also, just with any, any of the areas, just said, we would love to work with you, we would love to show you what's out there. We really want to be heard and to work on this, we need affordable housing, but it cannot destroy our neighborhoods, it cannot destroy our, our communities. We need to have a good quality of life. I thank you.
Thank you, and that will close your portion.
We submitted one more card for Ken Kahen.
What was the name of the individual? I can't hear.
Oh, we submitted one more card for this item, for Ken Kahen, General Comments.
Let's see if I have that. Oh, he, yeah, he, yeah, okay. Is he here? All right, Mr. Kahen, can you please come up?
Ken Kahen, California Landmark. I'm a, I'm a developer, it's a bad word. I want to talk for just a couple of minutes first about Councilman Cardenas. And really, you know, these issues we're talking about are not nearly in the same sphere as what you talked about a little bit earlier. Regardless, the issues are important to the city, and I don't really think that the council members here, I think they, they hear the communities, but at the end of the day, they're really not listening to an overall city issue. All, everyone says, we want affordable housing, but, it's always but. Do we really mean it? Off-menu is a code word. Off-menu means... Off-menu means planning, hearings, and delays, City Council actions, community planning, City Planning Commission actions. At the end of the day, that doesn't mean, I thought I had five minutes.
Total of five minutes for each side.
I'm sorry.
Yes. So if you can wrap up your comments.
I believe that the bottom line is, it means no affordable housing. Planning delays from an off-menu situation mean no affordable housing because developers won't build it. There is no certainty. At the end of the day, the only things they will do are buy right. Buy right means on-menu, that is really the key. With respect to the issue of what other cities do, the only comment I have is, we need to lead and provide the affordable housing. We, the City of Los Angeles, needs to lead Southern California.
Thank you, thank you very much, sir. There are two more speaker cards, and these individuals have spoken already, Mr. Ambrose and Mr. Sax, so I will read their names into the record, and that closes the public portion of our hearing. Next, I believe we need to vote on the amendments, and then we will ultimately vote on the ordinance.
Madam President, the first vote would be for the continuance, and that was Mr. Labonge's motion for 60 days, and that date would be April 15th.
And as a point of clarification, no matter what the outcome is, I think that is something that we, Mr. Reyes and I are both willing to do, Mr. Weston, who's been the joint chair with Mr. Reyes, to look at, at a lot of what's been going out there. There is a record of that, I appreciate that some haven't seen that, but no matter what happens with this amendment, it doesn't end there, and this obviously is amendable the entire time we do it. So I pledge to that, even though I asked for a no vote, and I know you asked for a yes one on that.
All right, Madam Clerk.
I vote to study.
Yes, Mr. Labonge?
No, I'm just standing up.
Oh, you're just standing up for dramatic impact. All right, yes. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
It fails.
We want to clear the board.
Seven ayes and five noes.
Is there a problem with where you were sitting?
You want to know, you want to know, you want to study this more, be good for you.
All right, let's, shall we clear the board and do it again? Can we do that? And then make sure that we have Mr. Garcetti on the. Can we clear the, clear the board and let's revote on this? And what we are voting about right now is whether or not to continue this item. All right, so Madam Clerk, yes is to continue, no is to vote today. You want to clear the board first? Are we clear? We cleared it and we revoked it. No, we have to clear the board and let's revote. Mr. Weston is not here right now. All right, so we have it exactly as it is, who is actually here and who is not here. All right, so the board is clear. Now you can open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Four ayes, seven noes.
All right.
That fails, Madam President. Then the first vote would be 45E, which is Councilmember Reyes's motion.
The yeses on that vote.
Because they weren't loyal to you. That was soft support, Mr. Labonge. They were soft, they went soft on you. I know what that feels like, you know? Join the club. That's why we're in politics. Thank you. All right. Next vote, Madam Clerk?
Next vote, Madam President, is item 45E, and that's Councilmember Reyes's amending motion.
Open the roll? I'm sorry.
You can't do E without have voting on C. So can we vote on?
Why would we go backwards? Mr. City Attorney, is there any reason why we need to go backwards on this?
So what are the amendments?
All right, Mr. City Attorney, I wanted to render your opinion on the record.
Well, it's not really a legal opinion, it's a clerical function.
Is there substantively any reason?
45C amends the, it allows to change the word contiguous or that contiguous, whatever, however you want to, you take out contiguous too and, okay. So that is, but item E would, would reflect, is actually suggesting what item C is doing and amending item C, so.
So you're saying substantively, it would not exist without C?
Correct.
So we can take C? There's no legal reason why we can't take C first, and let's just take C first?
Set.
All right, can we open the roll on?
I vote on C.
On C, that is 45C.
This is contiguous whether it's non-continuous.
Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Oh my goodness. Next item?
Does Council wish to do D, 45D or 45E?
Let's do, if we can, why don't we just do D next? Then we understand the nexus. Can we open them? 45D, Mr. Parks. That is a report back. This is a report back on the impact on transit corridors by Mr. Parks. Can we open the roll on that, please? Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
And now, on to 45E.
Boosting the percentage to 20%.
It's Mr. Reyes's motion, 45E. Can we open the roll on that, please? Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Six ayes, six noes.
Okay, six ayes, six noes.
That amendment fails. And now it would be the item as amended.
Mr. Weston's here or not, it doesn't change the vote.
Madam President, just a point of order.
Yes.
I voted yes for that, which meant, what, 20% would be affordable, right?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what you wanted, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Now the item is before council as amended.
The ordinance as amended. Madam Clerk, for the record, would you please explain on the record what we are about to vote on next?
The motions C and D passed and motion 45E failed.
All right, please open the roll. As amended, the ordinance as amended by the amendments that have already passed.
Oh, excuse me, Madam President.
Yes, sir.
I can't hear you. Deputy City Attorney Ken Fong, in order for this to move out of first reading, you should get a copy of the ordinance, include the actual language that was adopted, and do they have that all in front of them at this point? Okay, I just want to make clear.
No, we don't, we don't have that.
Let's hold for just a second, a little clarification between the two city attorneys who are present here in the chamber. Mr.?
This will be treated as a first reading, the language, the council knows what the language is in front of it. The City Attorney's Office and the Clerk know exactly where it belongs in the ordinance, and it will be treated as a first reading today if it passes.
And just a point of clarification for folks who are watching, a first reading, you need unanimity on a first read and at least 12 members. If not, it goes to a second reading as long as it has a majority in this case. This one will require, because of the planning nature, 10 votes on one of those to pass. So next time, it's not a simple majority like second reading often, as it requires 10, and that would carry over till Tuesday if at least eight members vote for this today.
It will be over for Wednesday.
Sorry, Wednesday, my bad. One week.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. All right, now, we are prepared to vote. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, three noes.
All right. Thank you.
Second reading on next Wednesday.
It was this Friday, as you recall, we, council has adjournment so that we can attend the funeral of Officer Randall Simmons, so our next council meeting will be this coming Tuesday.
But this goes over to Wednesday.
All right, I'm sorry, thank you, Madam Clerk, for correcting me. This goes over until next Wednesday. That concludes that item. Madam Clerk, what is our next order of business?
Next item, Madam President, is Special One, and that was introduced by Councilmember Reyes. The City Attorney will speak to the findings.
Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Since the posting of today's agenda, council canceled its meeting scheduled for this Friday. On that agenda was a time-sensitive item involving Seven Maples Senior Apartment Project. The deadline to secure a tax credit allocation is Monday, February 18th. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
All right. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, another example of us trying to provide housing for the most vulnerable in our communities. This is for seniors, appreciate the no vote. Thank you very much.
Madam President, council needs to vote on the findings before the item is before it.
Okay, please open the roll on the findings, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right, now let's open the roll on the item itself.
Special One.
Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right, what's our next order of business?
Next item, Madam President, is Special Two. That was presented by Council President Garcetti, seconded by Councilmember Rosendahl, and the City Attorney will speak to the findings.
Madam President, on Special One, forthwith, please.
Yes, thank you very much. Yes, and I would like to request the City Clerk move the entire agenda today forthwith, and we're on to Special Two, I believe? Yes. Okay, let's, City Attorney, can you make your findings, please?
Thank you, Madam President. Since the posting of today's agenda, the organization Legal Community Against Violence requested that the city sign on to an amicus brief supporting San Francisco's petition to the California Supreme Court for review of the city's anti-gun case. There is an immediate need to act due to the cancellation of this Friday's meeting and due to the February 18th deadline to file the amicus briefs. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Thank you very much. Can we open the roll on the findings? Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you very much. Now on the matter itself, Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank the Council President for introducing this motion and making sure the City of L.A. files a brief in support of the City of San Francisco, whose gun control ordinance has been struck down by the Court of Appeals. And I want the Council President and others to know that on Friday, February 29th, we're going to have a special meeting of the Public Safety Committee because Professor Chmerinsky, soon-to-be Dean Chmerinsky, is available to come speak with us then about another important gun control case that is pending in the U.S. Supreme Court. But what we'll do, since the Council President put this motion in here, is also make sure that that discussion includes a discussion of this California case and what, if anything, the City of L.A. can do about the issue of preemption with respect to California gun laws. So thank you, Mr. Garcetti, for doing that. I'll make sure that you and your officer are part of that hearing on the 29th.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Now if we can open the roll on that item, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
There was also a Special Three, I believe?
Yes, Madam President, that was presented by Councilmember Cardenas, and the maker of the motion will speak to the findings on that.
Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you. This was brought to my attention after the posting of today's agenda, and the urgency has to do with the volatility of the market. This is an issue of bonds that need to go out for sale, and to not allow them to go out sooner than, rather than later could potentially increase the cost of the department.
Let's open the roll on the findings. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Now on the matter itself.
I just ask for my colleague's support, thank you.
All right, if we can open the roll on the item itself, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right, next item, Madam Clerk.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motions are posted and referred.
There's an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Gruel requests to be excused Wednesday, March 5th, to leave at 12:15 for city business that meets council policy.
Without objection, Councilmember Gruel is excused.
And that clears the desk, Madam President.
All right, members, are there any announcements today? Mr. Parks?
I have two business announcements. Budget and Finance will hold its second community hearing February the 25th. CD 11 is hosting it at the West Los Angeles Municipal Building, second floor, and so that, we had one recently in the Valley, so we'll be out to talk about the budget. Also, on February the 16th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2, I'm sorry, 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power will be holding a hearing and town hall meeting at the Constituent Center in the 8th District at 8475 South Vermont regarding the proposal of rate increase.
Any other announcements? All right, members, please rise for adjourning motions. Do we have any adjourning motions? Oh my goodness. Yeah, well, okay, yes, if you would, Mr. President, that would be great if you would make another announcement about Friday.
Yeah, just to remind folks that we will not be having a city council meeting this Friday, we will be all headed to the funeral for Officer Simmons that is happening at Kentschau Christian Center. So council will be in recess this Friday, and will next be convened on Tuesday of next week.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti, and Madam Clerk, if you would call the roll. Meeting is adjourned, thank you, everyone.